Okay, welcome this evening. Um, let me get started here. Okay, as the acting chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipate and anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. School committee members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Elizabeth Albota.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
And myself. Uh, staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade.
Yes.
Jeff Ferrante.
Here.
Charles Gabron.
Yes.
Brian Haas.
He's muted.
He's muted.
Charles, stop playing funny there.
Hey, yeah. Brian?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Oh, you didn't, you were waiting on me? I apologize. I thought I said yes.
Oh, I think you are muted.
I apologize.
And Wayne White?
Yeah.
Uh, do we also do the student reps now?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Uh, Liam?
I'm here.
Great.
Rachel is, she's playing at the senior night for field talking tonight.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, this open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely as allowed by the Act Governor Baker signed into law on July 16th, 2022, extending certain pandemic-related policy measures. This bill authorized the continuation of remote meetings and public access under the open meeting law and other remote meeting provisions until March 31st, 2023. This committee is convening by Zoom as posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Accordingly, be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. Additionally, please use the raise your hand function to let the chair know if you are planning to record or broadcast this meeting. Anybody? Most of the supporting materials that have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public Schools website in a folder titled 2022 to 2023 agendas under the tab agendas, under the tab school committee. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents unless the chair notes otherwise. Citizens comments, any citizen wishing to make a comment to be read during a virtual meeting and entered into the public record may do so by emailing comments to comments for the number four Comments need to be emailed in advance and will be received up until the public comments agenda item is addressed. Please include public comment in the subject line and your full name and street address in the body of your email. Emails without this information cannot be read. Statements longer than 350 words may be cut short at the three-minute mark to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard, but will be submitted in their entirety for the public record. The chair will read only one statement from each individual. However, additional comments may be submitted for the public record by providing a copy to the chair via email up until the end of the meeting, explicitly stating their desire to have these additional comments included in the public record. Please be aware that the purpose of the public comments period is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the community it serves. As such, the protocol supports the unidirectional public sharing of public comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Meeting ground rules. Before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will ask each member if they have had and have any comments, questions, or motions that they would like to make. I will go through the members for additional comments or questions if time allows. Please hold off speaking until your name is called and remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. If members wish to engage with other members, please do so through the chair and take care not to interrupt anyone who is speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Before we go to the first agenda item, I'll take roll call. Um, Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
And Mauro Hogan, yes. I did not see any citizens' comments, is that correct, Colleen?
Correct. Okay. There's nothing.
Okay. Um, Brian, any urgent business?
Uh, no urgent business tonight.
All right, then we're moving to Liam and the student representatives report.
Um, hi, folks. I'm Leah. I'm Leah, I'm student representative. Rachel isn't here, she plays field hockey in the other senior night tonight, so go Tigers. Boo. Um, the commit, the report tonight is pretty short, so I don't think it'll take a while. The big thing that happened this week was on Tuesday, K-9 units, which are essentially like drug dogs from like the surrounding area, helped the Maynard Police Department check students' backpacks for legal drugs across the school. This was a school-wide search that where students were basically, they put their backpacks and put some hallway and then the, and then all classrooms are closed. Um, it's worth noting that the search did not find any illegal drugs in the school or any other like illegal things, the dogs can smell guns, they can smell, like stuff like that. Which I think is a great sign for a school that the search didn't find anything. And I think from a student point of view, the search went pretty well. It was coordinated with the announcements and I think that Ms. York did a good job, keep making sure, like, people understand this was like a normal thing. This wasn't like an emergency. And I think overall the search went pretty well. And there wasn't that much pushback from students, especially, I feel like most people accept that for safety. And so there wasn't much of like any protests or any from students. Um, in terms of other events happening around the school, we've had scene rights happen happening this week and last week, and tonight was field hockey, last night was soccer. There's also the football game on October 14th. In terms of sports, we've been having a lot of fun with our student section, however, there are concerns raised by some parents and by some members of the administration about like a small minority of students are being a bit disrespectful at games. And like including like, but not limited to like yelling other players' names or saying other disrespectful things. We're planning some trainings, just like a small 10-minute training, like after, before, like during the school day, just teach students about what's acceptable and what's not. This training isn't so much to like tell students what's not acceptable, because it's, because most people do know what's not acceptable, but just like make sure that if a student is in trouble for saying those things, we can have justification of saying, hey, you were at the training, you do know that's not allowed. Other things that are happening at games is there's going to be a police unit at the next game with a breathalyzer, just because of concerns about underage drinking. But that's more of a, like, sorry, my parents just got home, so there's a bit of noise downstairs if you're hearing that. But yes, there's going to be a police unit at the next game with breathalyzer, I'm like pretty sure on this one. Other things that are happening, there was a Mazar conference on October 15th, which is essentially a meeting of all student representatives from the state. And it's a very large meeting, it was at a hotel in Marlboro, I attended. And there was, it was basically a discussion about like what schools in Massachusetts need to like improve on. And one of the big topics that I think we could really bring into Maynard is diversity and inclusion, or D E I. And I think Maynard is kind of maybe not amazing at that, I know we don't have any P O C teachers and we also have very limited L B T Q representation on our staff with, as far as most people are aware, only one openly out teacher. So I think that's definitely a sign Maynard can work on in the future. In terms of what you guys said about last meeting on like comments on the agenda, unfortunately, we are planning to do comments on the agenda and other things about like the school committee's policy, unfortunately, last meeting was pretty much, was very overwhelmed by the like drug discussion and also by the drug dogs, because it happened Tuesday, like the period before our meeting occurred. So next meeting, we'll definitely have some comments on agenda and other student concerns involving that kind of thing. Um, and also find, one final thing is that we've organized a committee to talk over the student handbook for the high school and just like modernize it for the next coming years, because there's a lot of like changes in the culture at school that is, that happens, we're making sure our handbook reflects that. Thank you, any questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, what'd you say about which committees going over the school, the handbook?
Um, yes, S A C, which is our student advisory committee, is essentially, yeah.
Thank you. And then if I could ask, what happened with the lunches, the last time we talked to you, you were, there were like concerns?
Oh, yes. Um, student council formed a subcommittee involving the lunches and currently they are communicating with Whitsuns, they have a meeting scheduled for, I think, next month at some point. And they've also sent out a survey to the students, just getting their feedback on lunches. Um, yeah, not much to say, lunches are still kinda eh.
Okay. Uh, I heard that they ran out of food for a second lunch today?
Not today, but I know they did run out of school, they have run out of lunches in the past. Especially when it comes to like alternates, like oftentimes if the main meal isn't that good, it's like not like a popular thing, they'll run out of alternates and students will basically be forced to take them, you know, because I don't have the other options.
Okay.
And a lot of times that will sometimes they'll cut into like vegetarian options, like people that like aren't vegetarian will like be like, well, I don't want to have the main meal, let's take a vegetarian option, which is bad for vegetarian students, obviously.
Right.
Liam, can I just ask, when you're going through the student handbook, which I think is great, can you just like highlight the areas that you're changing so that when we look at it, because we have to approve it as school committee, we don't have to go through the whole thing and try and figure it out, so if you can just, you know?
It's only going to be a long process and it's gonna, it's not gonna be like, oh, we're gonna like submit a new handbook, it's definitely gonna be like, we're gonna present a proposal about what changes we think are necessary and let people vote on the individual changes by the thing as a whole.
Great, thank you.
Can you maybe just keep us updated on which part you're on when we see you each time?
Yes.
Have an idea of where you are. Sorry, Mary.
No, that's okay, it's all good, thank you. And just going back to the K-9 dogs for a minute, because I know that has been like an ongoing tradition that we've done. When you say that there was some pushback from some of the students, they just felt like it was an intrusion of their privacy or?
That was the big concern, was intrusion of privacy. Other students, they felt that like, they weren't really like, they didn't feel like the communication was inadequate, but they just felt like they should have been like, I guess, told about the drugs we're looking for, because when it happened, the dogs, like the, there was announcement like K-9 dogs are gonna be like searching in police student classrooms. A lot of students were worried that like, maybe like if they had like illegal medication, that would get like flagged, which obviously nothing got flagged and it was a clean search, but there was just a bit of confusion on that.
Okay. And did you share that with Mr. York for future reference or?
We did, we did share with her and we had, that was what our entire Tuesday meeting was basically focused on, was just drugs in schools in general and also the K-9 and how that went.
Thank you, thank you. I do know that I've heard numerous times, in fact, going back to Mr. Caruso, that there is an escalating situation with vaping at the high school, I guess specifically, and probably at the middle school too, but, you know, so we're.
Absolutely, that's a good topic to get into, the thing is, it's definitely concerned with a lot of our student body, just because of how it influences like the culture, like a lot of times if you're going to the bathroom and there's like a bunch of people in there vaping, that can kind of make you feel like unwelcome, meaning you like go find a bathroom. Um, one thing the administration is doing is, I don't know if they've told you about this, but they're going to be installing vape protectors in several of the bathrooms.
That's what Mr. Caruso was in the process of doing, or what he was talking about before he left, yeah, that's good.
And while like a lot of students feel like those might be effective, there's definitely other ways we can improve, because the bathrooms are the only place people vape. And there's also concerns about students just vandalizing them, just breaking them. And what SAC has been talking about a lot is education, especially through social media, and basically just like informing students of the risks and also of giving them resources, helping them quit, say it's an addiction. I feel like sometimes vaping, it's like, oh, it's not as bad as smoking, it's not addictive, but it's definitely just as addictive as smoking in terms of nicotine consumption. And in terms of the social stigma around it, because for a lot of kids, it's like a social thing they do, they'll be like, I'm gonna cut class and like hang out with my friends, you know?
If you can, yeah, just keep a surprise to that too, because obviously very important, that'd be great, thank you.
Anybody else, Natasha?
Yeah, I just, actually, you mentioned about the vaping in the bathroom and I had heard that or feedback from from other students as well, who have concerns about bathroom activities and what might be happening in there, so I just keep us updated on that, because the feedback was specifically what you pointed out, that some, some kids who are not wanting to engage in those activities feel uncomfortable about going into the bathroom and when they're, you know, have other kids who might be engaging, and so that's not what we wanna, you know, have a safe place for people to do what they need to do.
It's definitely, yeah, it's tougher, because it's the bathroom and you obviously can't have like a teacher just standing in there. And obviously, it's, it's all, so it's, it's just very, it's like a very sensitive issue for law students and I know, of course, last week, we did a lot of talking about that. And I think we have some positive change in that direction, it's just been overshadowed by like the harder, like by the K-9 search and other stuff like that, so we'll be sure to update you next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I think the only other thing that the, was there, was there a homecoming? I know that came up in our last meeting, that there was a date to be discussed for homecoming at the high school, has that been?
Yeah, homecoming is done through N H S, which is their National Modern Society. I'm not a member of N H S, but there are, like, I have talked to members and they're settling around like an early November date. It's just not been completely formalized yet.
Okay.
But if you are interested in getting updates, the Maynard High School Instagram page is probably the first place we'll go.
Oh, Insta, huh? I have to go, I don't think, I don't know if I'm following that one, I need to go.
It's a good one.
It is, I think I had the athletic one, yeah, I gotta go, gotta go check all my links, but thank you. And I think the only other piece would be in, looking at our agenda for today. I don't know if you had some other thoughts or feedback that you wanted to share with us as we, or if you, as we deliberate, I don't know if anything jumps out, if you had questions that maybe we, we might be able to answer for you.
Um, right. I do personally, but I want to make it clear that this is like my personal opinion, not depending on like student body or S A C.
This is what we want, we want your opinion.
Okay, but just, I'm just making it clear, because the other stuff I've been saying has been like stuff we've gone over in committee, and I just want to make it clear, this is my personal opinion. Um, right. Um, in terms of attendance, I think that a lot of times student attendance gets like a bad rap, because students aren't hitting classes. But a lot of times students will like miss class for like mental health reasons, and I feel like it's definitely a thing, I think the school should focus less on like making sure students come to every class and more on like helping students' mental health and making sure that like classes, I think they're trying to avoid. And I feel like a lot of times in the past, like things on attendance, obviously like they do help. But I feel like sometimes they're like enforced kind of like arbitrarily, without regard for like students' like individual needs and like respect, and I, I have a friend that like would cut class sometimes and he's a very smart kid and he got good grades, but he was still at risk of failing classes, even though he was getting good grades, because he was missing them sometimes. And I feel like, just in general, that it needs to be more humanity and how attendance, like rules are enforced.
Thank you so much for, for sharing that and in that way, because I think that as one member myself, but I, I'm guessing other people may feel the same way. There needs to be a good balance, I mean, I know as a district, we do account, you know, people, students learn better when they are in school, but there is that aspect that accountability can't be the foreshadowing theme when it comes to attendance, they'd need to look at the root cause oftentimes to see how do we support someone who may have school avoidance or anxiety, whatever those pieces are, that are limiting their ability to engage in a healthy way in school. And I remember actually that, thank you for bringing that up, because I, when I was, I attended a couple of school council meetings at the high school and the student rep, this was maybe, I don't know, four years ago, five years ago, that was precisely what, what he talked about, about attendance and the aspect of how sometimes it's just uncomfortable for in the context it was brought up, is more that if a student might be falling behind, there can be sometimes a peer stigma of, of not wanting to come to school, which then how do we support, you know, that type of scenario that keeps them engaged without having them stigmatized and, and, you know, where they are academically as they, you know, engage in school, so thank you for highlighting that, I really, really appreciate hearing that particular feedback at that it needs to be, the humanity for the accountability needs to be a higher theme.
Yeah, I want to, I just want to jump in and say that we have been talking about attendance in just that way, Liam, and, and also that you saying it also helps us do that well, so.
Yes.
Anytime you'd want to share your personal opinion, that would does help us do a better job, so thanks.
And I had one more question for you, Liam, and this is maybe something to bring back to, since we're on our agenda today, we, we're gonna be talking about the superintendent goals and, and all of those pieces. If at some point the school committee were to have like a survey to the student body to just gauge feedback through the year about, you know, would that be something that you think would be positively, the information would be shared with the school committee, that, that would be well received?
I think a lot of the problems with like surveys that go about from the administration is that law students won't answer. Especially the apps that are like personal things like mental health or drug use, they are often aren't answered. Honestly, I know a big thing that happened this year and last year is there's a yearly survey sent out about like drug use and like mental health issues that's sent out like through the school.
And the youth risk surveys, I think.
Yeah, the risk survey, and I don't know if you guys know this, but a lot of students like will even like say in class while they're taking it, I'm not gonna answer this honestly, because it will often ask something like, what's your eye color, or what's your middle initial, and then ask you like, do you do cocaine? And a lot of students, they feel like that information will be used to identify, they don't feel like they're safe answering truthfully. And that will also tie into like the mental health aspect, we're like, that's very asked, like, have you ever like been depressed or like suicidal? And students will feel like if they answer honestly, they're gonna be like found out essentially. Even though it is an anonymous survey, I think everyone knows it's anonymous just because of the way it's presented as like a mandatory thing through like the administration, a lot of students will not answer honestly on it. So I feel like it is important, if you're gonna give a survey, that you need, that you like put safeguards in place to make sure it's very clear to the students, not just to you guys, that's anonymous.
Thank you, thank you for sharing that, I know that Charles and Mary, particularly on the wellness committee, are, they have a new policy that we approved re-school committee, and I know that part of their initiatives, the risk aspects are really important and being discussed, so I appreciate hearing it really truly what you've just shared, and I don't know how that, Mary or Charles, ideas, you know, as surveys and data is being collected, you know, just something to percolate.
I think it would be great to have a student on our wellness committee.
I do, I.
I was just saying that, but I know it's at 7:00 AM in the morning and that was the only thing I was, I was just.
Yeah, if you would ever consider being on it, it would be huge dividends for us. Help, so, like you need to add one more thing to your plate, but it would be great, because we do, we meet at seven o'clock in the morning, you get to school in time.
Yeah, Liam, thank you very much.
Oh, Liam is muted, Colleen or or Charles. Where'd he go? He's still muted.
Um, yeah, I know mental health is a thing a lot of students are very active about, so I could, who's runs it, I could send them like an email of someone who would be interested in joining.
Mr. Waldron is the chair, is the chair of the committee.
Oh, that's great, I have his class. So I could definitely go talk to student council and find a member to join that, because I think.
We got more than one, we got more than one, more than a year.
That would be fantastic, that actually, yeah, I think that makes it act, because I know we've had feedback through the years about the survey and, you know, the best way to delivery and getting results, and, and I think if student participation on, on that would be great to help reinforce the benefits of collecting that data.
We have had student reps before too, and really, it's beneficial.
It definitely is, because I feel like a lot of times it's just like kind of like bridge between like the, like the school committee and like the actual students, like students won't understand why like big things happen. And sometimes school committee won't know what's happening like on the ground, so I feel like this is a great avenue to communicate.
Awesome.
Well said.
Thank you, Liam.
You're hired.
It's a high-paying job.
Yeah.
For the rest of us.
Just like everybody else, you get a bunch of zeros, but.
But it's great on your resume.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Have a nice night.
Yeah, you too.
You too.
Okay, Brian, superintendents report?
Absolutely, Colleen will share with you or share on the screen. I believe. There we go. And it's been a pretty exciting, it's been busy, really busy, but a lot of really good, exciting stuff. We've sort of broken new ground on a variety of fronts. Uh, now that COVID's over, we've kind of, during COVID, we did a lot of talk about Maynard and selling the Maynard story and really getting the word out about how great things are in terms of programming, but we really weren't able to get the word out maybe as well as we wanted. Um, and now we have some new players in terms of administration and we're back in person, so we can get groups together, so for example, last Thursday, Assistant Principal Dr. Rob came to the Fowler School for a quick presentation, half an hour with the, I believe, I want to say seventh and eighth grade to really go, oh, and I happened to have time, I went in, I could watch it, so it was really kind of exciting, it started with a group of band kids playing live music for a little while, and then I will give her credit, I think she organized it really intelligently in the sense of, it was basically a student panel. So it wasn't a lot of an administrator or an adult standing in the front talking to the room. It was different students coming up and saying, hey, this is what I get to do at Maynard High School. So for, one student would talk about the band, another student would talk about the global scholars pathway. Another student might talk about athletics, another student might talk about A P classes or the art classes pathways, it was, but it had a very good vibe about it, the kids were attentive. Both the high school students who participated, they were just on, they knew what they wanted to say. And it was nice to have everybody in the forum, in the auditorium at Fowler to be able to hear that message at once, and so we're gonna follow that up next week with a open house for the middle school students at the high school with a similar presentation, a little more advanced, if you will, but it'll have that same feeling of a student panel, because I think it doesn't matter if you're an adult or a kid, I think you tend to hear the message from a student better, like what was your experience, and they can share that better than we can sell it, better than we can say it, even if we're saying the same thing, it's their lived experience and they do a phenomenal job with that. So they're working on organizing all that, we're excited about that, and it's in line with one of the things we've talked about for a couple of years. Um, and that is really talking ourselves up and working it so that it's not just to the high school kids, but it's actually the middle school kids, if you will, and, you know, the fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth graders, because that's when they start to have choices of where do I want to go to school? Do I want to go to a charter school option, do I want to go to a tech school option? And for some kids, that is absolutely the right choice. For most kids, I think it's fair to say that we offer a full complement of programming and we can service them, meet their needs, and they will have a phenomenal experience at Maynard High School. So we're really working to get that word out to a broader audience than we have in the past. That's one exciting thing going. Another exciting thing going on would be the Fowler School, and I think if, and that we did not get a big turnout last night, I'm sorry to say, but we did have our first public forum. I think we did it for Natasha, and I'm only kidding, there was a few people that, you were there, there were about four other people in attendance, but that was the first time, so that's okay, it will get a better audience and we'll be able to tighten it up a little bit, but I, I referenced that in connection to Fowler, because one of the big things there at Fowler are all the upcoming clubs. So it's another way to really just improve engagement, students, they find different ways that they want to be engaged. So, and you can see on the slide, some of it's typical and it's good stuff, you know, the fight against breast cancer, the upcoming clubs, and that's the big one, because that looks like the weakest one on that list, but it actually probably connects to the most amount of kids, because it could be any club. So they, both Mr. Snyder and Mr. Barth have worked really hard with the students and the staff to make this a reality. The Purple Pinky, fundraiser, I'm not sure if it's a fundraiser, a little bit of a fundraiser, yeah, just to really expose students to the fact that luckily polio has basically been eradicated in the United States, but that isn't true around the whole globe. Um, and this is an opportunity for them. And this is an opportunity for them to get involved and help people on the other side of the globe. So there's some educational components to that as well. And then just traditional, some fun Halloween socials up and coming, sort of in line with what Liam mentioned for the high school, the homecoming, which is the younger version. And it's nice to get the kids back. It's just exciting. Green Meadow. So a couple of things, one would be, and I that basic is having a field trip during our professional development tomorrow with some of the kids. So that's just a nice opportunity for them. Which isn't always possible, but it was this time. Which we're excited about. And today, actually, the first grade went on their first field trip in several years to a pumpkin patch. All the students, they got to participate in a hayride, cider donut, animal petting. And everybody actually came home with a pumpkin. So congratulations to the grade one PTO for organizing, but it's nice. It's just another example of getting back out there and really just enjoying life, which we've been kind of hard pressed to do. And when we want to take a dive into our instructional lens, we've been doing learning walks at each three buildings. All the administrators were kind of teamed up and treat in threesomes for the most part, and Assistant Principal Lindquist, Principal Barth and Director of Student Services, Mr. Ferrante, who's on here, they're a team. They're a group and they had the opportunity to visit classrooms at Green Meadow today, this morning. And you never know what you can get first thing in the morning in elementary school, but it was fabulous. They were just very impressed with overall student engagement, the enthusiasm, the continuum of content across grades that they visited. And it's just an example, that's happening across all three schools. Different days, depending on when your team is meeting, but it's something that we're doing this year. So those are some of our most recent successes.
Can I ask a question? A couple of questions? Before we go on. So the, I was really excited about the whole Fowler Middle, High School collaboration in that, because we keep, we keep talking about it. And I know the last couple of years it was done on Zoom and that was even done well, but and this comes from actually a conversation that Elizabeth and I had last night. So I thought it was just for eighth graders, but you're saying that the whole middle school is going to be invited up to the high school? Cause I think that might've gotten lost in translation with at least the most recent email.
So for the one for next week, it's a night event?
Right.
And I'll double check that. I'm
I know it is, it is. It's a sixth, seventh and eighth middles. It is the middle school for next week.
Yeah. So like Elizabeth said, though, the, the students that are thinking like, for instance, in going to Amso, they're, they're already thinking about it in the fifth grade. So to have the whole middle school be
We could, we could open that up.
Or a different time even, but something really soon would be really, really great. Cause the rest of it is, is headed in the right direction. So we're doing it at the right time of the year too, which is also phenomenal. And then the other piece was when you're talking about the different clubs, student led clubs, are those going to be after school or are those incorporated into the day? Or how is that going to work?
Those for the most part are after school clubs.
So it's gonna go to my, one of my other questions about our, our after school bus, but we'll talk about that when we talk about money. So go ahead, keep going.
So that's honestly, that's not a money issue last year or this year.
The bus, the after school bus?
Not a money issue for us the last year or this year. The money, the issue for an after school buses, D bus has not had the capacity to do that.
Ah, interesting.
And really, when I go to my board meetings for Aspen Valley Collaborative and Case Collaborative, same issue. They're short on drivers. Can't get bus drivers right now. And I totally agree with you. An after school bus.
Wow.
It is, we'll, I'll reach back out to Sandra and see what we can do.
Maynard, I think it came up before, it was because we're such a small ask to like for it. It's almost like the effort. Is it worth the rub to, you know, for the short amount that for Maynard where it's, if it's a larger district? I think it's more lucrative or it comes across. I don't know if we maybe could do a collaborative, you know, if there are other districts who are using D and are having the same thing, you know, I know from a, is there a way they could do like, oh, multiple town?
We could look at, I mean, typically you need the bus to do your town just because otherwise you're on the bus for too long.
Right.
But I will reach back out and
I appreciate that. Yeah. Definitely help.
We definitely has one and it's not that much bigger than us.
Who does?
Hudson has one and it's for the only the high school and we could probably make it work for the middle and high school here.
Right. That's what I'm thinking too.
And so I don't think the numbers would be that different.
Right. If you could, Brian, that would be great.
Definitely reach out to Sandra.
That was all I had. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Brian, I just wanted to say last night, the, because I were talking about clubs. I do remember it was recorded also, so there was going to be a home place for people. Yeah, that would be great if that could be like kind of blasted out to the community. Like, hey, in case you missed it, because I did have a parent already saying, oh, I, you know, couldn't go just be like, and just kind of like where they would be able to find those type of the series. If we could give a little bit more context, like, hey, here's the first of our whatever. And then also maybe highlight because you've already planned for the next two. And one for November and December, and that might just kind of get that tickler. And, and as we're announcing it like this, because I think they were really great topics. I think was it guidance or, or next time, or I, I remember, I think Mr. Ferrante is going to be doing one and then a month later. Maybe mental. Yeah, yeah. The risk survey actually. Yeah. So I think they're, they're really great topics and I would love parents to get energized about them. As soon as can, we get on their calendars so they can plan to be there. But I love the idea of recording them and be able to, you know, see them later. Cause it was slideshows that the teachers put together or the principals put together, which were really great about the clubs, Mary.
That would be fantastic. Yeah. I'm glad you said that it was taped because yeah, I didn't, wasn't able to see it, but I will. And if you could send it to everybody right from pre K all the way up.
Yeah, we will add it to like the smores, which goes district wide.
Okay.
I think it actually, I would, I would say if we can get it standalone, like just to draw, draw attention to it. Because the smore, some schools are a little bit, you know, have a lot of content there and I don't want it to get lost in. You know, like, oh, this kind of like happened if there, I think it really, for the work that put in and the, what we want to get out of it for people in the future. I really think it warrants that. A standalone communication, if we can.
Okay, we absolutely.
And then I keep interrupting. When they are recorded, if they could be put on the website, on like a, maybe even a special spot.
Yep.
You know, so
We'll work on that tomorrow to make sure that it's front and center.
Right.
And I always balance like how many emails, like it's nice to make it its own, but then parents like, really? You haven't sent me three emails today. So just balancing that act.
I know. I, I think what it is, is maybe just because I'm excited about this first, like people wanted to know what it's about, maybe not after each one, but just to get the like, it's a new, it's a new initiative. And I, I think it just for the work that you guys had put into it, it was really great. And for the important topics that are coming up, I really think people, you know, a lot of families, I just want to draw their attention to that. You know, but beyond just the fundraiser stuff that might get lost, you know, in the, in the smores with all the other things that are happening. So that was, that's my, my idea. I think it is important enough to, to do, but maybe not all the time.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I will keep. So we do have grants, which I'm always excited about because it means we can do more things for our students. We have two special education entitlement grants that were approved. One was the ninety-four, one forty-two, and one was the early childhood. If we go to the next, and you can see the amounts, and if we go to the next slide, it nicely tells you, this is the individual disabilities education act, federal special education, special education act. Fund code two forty, cost center two thousand. And that's what I, you guys need to know.
Good job.
Thank you. And I'm just trying to like move our faces around so I can read our slide. Cause on a laptop, it's a little funky there. You can read what the purpose is actually. And you can, how we're dividing that up.
Brian, can I ask a question about, because I know we're, we're working on like just finalizing a process for everyone. How has this been working for you, you know, and Wayne to, to put this, because I think this looks great. And you know, if it's working, you know, operationally to, to get this type of content, you know.
I think it works. It's a team effort. And I don't want to speak for Wayne, but I think he would have said, this is just not working for me if it wasn't, and he hasn't. So I assume it is. For you, I think this is for us to prepare it this way.
Wayne has a little coy smile there. I don't know how to
Well, we'll get to him in a minute. I think being able to share with you the purpose of the grant and how we're spending it and the cost center in an easy, just a straightforward slide. Not, I think that's totally doable for us to continue doing.
Okay.
Wayne, but I can't see his face, so I'm not sure.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know if how it it, it seemed to work, I think, from, from my view of meeting the, the requirements. But I also want to make sure balancing that over, you know, new, new work that has to be undertaken to put that together. What does that you know, entail? Because it looks like we're going to be getting these probably at almost at every meeting or, you know, in some capacity at some point.
You're going to get a lot of them. Yes. But I, but I'll talk with, oh, I mean, I can't see Wayne, but if you want, if Wayne, you have something to say, then you want to interrupt me, you just go right ahead, right now before this grant.
No, he's, he's not.
He said, no, okay. He's okay. Good.
Go wait until he does the quarterly report.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's a lot of work.
Yeah.
So again, so this second grant also, it's for just under $8,000. It's the early childhood special education program, federal entitlement grant. It's for seventy-nine seventeen. Again, we attach it to cost center two thousand. So just in line, if at some point, if you want to, so those are the only two grants today. If you want to accept those two.
If I could, Brian.
Absolutely.
So with these grants, are they over and above like circuit breaker? Are they ones that like, we're going to, we can expect to get every year? Or as long as we apply, or is this having to do with, you know, S R or, or kids falling back or anything like that?
Nope. So they're not S R related. We should get them, but I see a hand up and I am absolutely going to hand the football to my friend, Mr. Ferrante.
Or he needs to be unmuted.
He need to be unmuted. Okay.
Yeah, these are, these are not competitive grants. These are like Yeah.
All right, Jeff, let's hear.
All right, we're unmuted. Yes, we get these every year. Every year it's about the same amount. Sometimes we get a little bit more like a grand on the two forty and maybe a couple of hundred bucks on the two sixty-two. So yeah, we, we get these all the time. These are not competitive grants at all.
Okay. So we just have to apply for them and we can, we pretty much get them, can count on them.
Yeah, that's it. And, and you, when you look at the one forty-two, there's like a small part of it for other activities. We have to spend a per, a certain amount of our federal grant on kids who are homeschooled or who are going to any of our private schools in the district, which is basically a Mago. So that could come in the form of assessments of kids in, in homeschool at the private school. It could be in the form of PD and the state does come in and look at that. Like, have you used a portion of your money? And that's based on how many kids we have that would be eligible. Oh, no. They'll be based on how many kids are eligible. As a ratio to how many total kids that we have in special ed.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Okay. So do we need to do these separate? Go for these separately, or can we do them together?
I think we probably can just do them together as long as we cite the, all the details for each one in just one motion. I'll make a motion that we accept and allocate grants sped nine, four, one, one, two, in the amount of three hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars to fund code two forty-two. And grant sped early education amounting to seven thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars to fund six, two, six. And allocate them to cost center two thousand as recommended.
Any discussion? Okay, this will do roll call vote. Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Elizabeth, Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
And Marah Hogan, I'm yes.
And I just wanted to add, I did see, think on the listserv somewhere that there might be, I think Tracy put a comment about maybe even part of the consent agenda. So as we're thinking about grants in the future, you know, for other things like the MEEF or whatever, there might be, where we don't have to go into the granular, you know, piece each time. It might be, I just, I'm going to circle back to her and ask her a little bit more about that, but just so we don't make it super cumbersome. If there's a way to streamline this.
Okay.
What, what our options are.
Thank you. I wanted to give you an update on the Green Meadow MSBA. The things that we've done for the building project. So we had the opportunity to go to what's called a story of a building at the Hildreth Elementary School in Harvard, Mass. On October thirteenth. So Rob, Principal Rulo went. Adam Steiner, myself. And it was really great. It was actually put on by MSBA. And there were probably, I want to say around fifty attendees, if you will, different school systems that are in the process of building projects, whether they're starting to write their statement of interest or they're breaking ground and everything in between. For us, it was really nice because number one, it was an elementary school. It was about our size. It's close by. They have a lot of similar interests in town, if you will. So sustainability is, is a interest of many people in Harvard as well as in Maynard. So we heard from, again, it was kind of nice. They put it together and we got to hear from the fifth graders. There were a group of fifth grade students. And they shared, you know, what did they like? And the most common theme was, and you hopefully you find this funny, I found it kind of funny. They liked all the natural light. And then one young person said, I actually think we get much more vitamin D. So out of the They talked about comfortable air temperature. They talked about the different learning places and we saw once we went on our, and we also heard from the CEO of MSBA and the school superintendent and the principal and lots of administrators. But that was the high point in the morning. Well, for me was hearing from the kids and then the tour itself was really nice. It was, and I was with, we were together. They grouped us accordingly. And so we had to I'd say it was the advantage of we got the go on a tour with the chair of the school committee. So she really knew the building. So it was good to talk to her and just hear about how they got to where they were going and see the building. So some of the things that we hadn't put in our plan, but when we got back, we emailed our team and said, hey, we didn't think about this, but what do you think about it? Can we do this? Like, for example, in the cafeteria, they had a, a sink sort of at the entrance or, you know, the entrance exit to the cafeteria. Two person sink with soap and water. So you could just wash your hands instead of having to use hand sanitizer all the time. That's a great idea. We all wash our hands, you know, before eating. So how nice is that? Bathrooms, they have sort of the new model of no doors where there's, you know, boys go one way, girls go the other way, but the sinks are outside. So there's no playing around with the splashing because that's almost in the hallway. But you can't see in the bathroom. They also had this really cool thing, which I should just let Mr. Rulo tell you because he's taking the time to be here. Is he here? I'll let him tell, he'll, he'll know what I'm talking about. Mr. Rulo, are you here? If he's not, I'll tell you, but I thought I saw his name.
Yes, I am here.
You want to tell them the thing you, that you're very excited about?
Ah, well, actually, to be honest with you, there was, it was a couple of things, but the, the first one was in elementary schools, you can't have an auditorium. All right. So the, the MSBA doesn't, you know, it's not something that is, is they allow. But they had these, these stairwells or these seats that went, that these rising. And they were called, I believe, Brian, they're, they're just, I don't know exactly what they're, they're called, but what it was is, is instead of a wall going up, they basically took down a wall and they had the that the kids could go on to. They could have class meetings, they could have presentations. All these fabulous opportunities in order for the kids to be in groups or parents to come in and see. That to me was, I, I mean, I just sat there and looked out at the wall. They had a, they had a a camera that went out and be able to show videos and movies and other things for it. It was just a, to me, that was a honestly, a great way in order to bring in something else that where you don't have an auditorium. The other thing, and I'm, I'm sure Brian might say this is, I was very impressed with their decorations. And in one area, they had a, and we were talking about this for Maynard, they had this whole scenario of a wall about Harvard. And about the things that were really special about Harvard. And I, and Brian was the first one to say is like, we could do that in regards to what is special about Maynard. And it, the kids just came by and the people came by and they looked at it. It was really a nice historical aspect of the town. So it really brought community and everybody together. I hope I hit it, Brian.
You hit it. You did well. Thank you very much. The only other thing, and I think you mentioned it, but so they had a stairwell that went from the first to the second floor. And adjacent to that was what they called a learning stair. And Rob mentioned it, but it was right next to that. And you could sit an entire grade on those. And adjacent to that was what they called a learning stair and Rob mentioned it, but it was right next to that. And you could sit an entire grade on those. Stairs that were carpeted next to the stairwell and it had the ability to project. On the wall. So you could show like, they did their nature, for example, nature classroom. You want to get your entire. Fifth grade together, you can bring them all there and do the presentation right there. Really, really neat. Anyway, it was definitely worth going. We brought some ideas back, so I wanted to. Update you on that. I know that I've invited. For the November third meeting, just so put it on your radar, uh, Chris. LeBlanc and Phil. So MVG and Colliers to our meeting to update, but it may get changed because our meeting for Monday just got canceled, I saw.
Right.
Um, I'm not sure. I don't, that may not matter. I think they're still coming to the third to talk about security because we've had that meeting, um, give an update and. Um, just give an overall update. That was one of the main purposes.
And Brian, the last meeting, Natasha brought up the good point about the, the whole library thing and the media center. Did you bring that back to Chris and that too? So that, that hopefully will be part because you had said that there was going to be rendering and updated rendering.
Yep.
Can we?
Oh, yeah, because I was, thanks, Mary, because I was looking to see and I, um. When I thought, I, I, I kind of got a better glimpse of what they were talking about. They had all these like doors for. Offices and stuff and it, look, I was imagining where like, where it is now and I. I, I think it seemed like it was all throughout. It seemed like it would be a lot of distraction. I think that's the context of how the, the library ensured.
Yeah, well. I will, I know I have, so I think that's the other thing that he'll update on amongst other things. He's.
Uh, what, oh, sorry. No, I just wanted a question about the security, um, piece. Does any of that need to happen in an executive session?
No, because we really won't go into the detail. Like, we won't even share with the public the specifics of all the security, but enough to give you an update. So.
Because I would like to actually know, like, as a school committee member, um, because we don't actually have those conversations and I know. On the heels of what happened at other schools, um, I would like to hear a little bit more about. What they are envisioning, maybe beyond what the public needs to hear. So I don't know if there's an opportunity for that, but I just want to kind of put it out there. It is something I just want to. I'd like to hear more about, maybe.
Yeah, well, let's start with November third and hear what he has to share and how he shares it. And if there are additional questions, we'll figure out how to answer those the best way.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And, and one more question, Brian, about that, that auditorium light thing. So does that mean that the building is going to be expanded in size? Or is Chris trying to work it out in the parameters of what we've got?
He's trying to stay within the parameters of what we have.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Elizabeth, do you have any questions?
Um, nope, not right here.
Okay, um, my, my question is, so. Is this amount, the elementary school that you went to, is that not set up like the design that we have? If this was more just a. This is what they did and then maybe pick out pieces that you liked to incorporate into our design?
Yeah, so it's their design. It's a brand new build. Um, they have, so they have an open library, you know, um. There's no walls. There, I shouldn't say there's no walls. There's a couple of walls, but the majority of it's open. You can walk in and out multiple ways. They have a lot of. Interesting learning spaces in the hallways, which I think our staff felt like that may not be the best idea. Um, because it requires a lot of supervision and there's a lots of reasons behind it. So. I think. I took the purpose as for all the school systems that were attending was just sort of see what could be. So this was a system that did their visioning and worked with their community and came up with this particular plan. And it was. As Rob mentioned, like the artwork on the wall in one place. But I mean, immediately I thought, hey, Maynard clock tower. And then build off from there because it looked like a map of the town. Um, so it's nice to see what some of the ideas that the architects talk about. Or the construction folks talk about the owners, project manager, like you could do this, you could do that. But if you haven't seen it. Sometimes we all might envision it differently. So it was nice to actually go and see. A new building that was about our size that was built, literally it just opened. Within the last year. And so to really see what does that look like? And they were lucky. They got in. Quite frankly, pre-COVID prices.
Great.
So that was the purpose. Well, time well spent.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't know if it's time to bring it up now. I was going to bring it up later, but I did visit the new Douglas and Gates over in Acton. That just opened.
Oh, it's big, right?
Yeah, it's beautiful, like ridiculously beautiful. I went this weekend. They had an open house. I got free ice cream. That's important to mention. Um, but, but I will say. A lot of what you're saying here reminds me of what I saw there. Um, uh, so like the light really mattered. There was so much light everywhere. And I think that there's something to think about when we, when we're building the space. Um, they had, like you were mentioning, the, like what they called airport bathrooms, um, which are the opens, kind of, you can see the sinks from the hallway, but you can't see anything else. Um, so that was nice, but, um, but they, instead of having an open library, they had a two-floor enclosed library that was like circular. Okay, listen to this. And then the, and then when you looked up, it looked like the night sky. It imitated, I mean, it was stu-, it was ridiculous. It was like, it was like soothing for the children. So that they looked up and it was kind of like stars and they had all these nooks and crannies where kids could read. Um, in the, in this like circular library space. And because it used to be, I guess it was like, it's a Douglas and Gates. So they have like an idea that's somewhat like at the downstairs is for Douglas and upstairs is for, uh, Gates. Um, in my situation, I wasn't with, you know, other people looking at the building to think about buildings. I was in parents and, and led by students and the students ranged in age from fifth grade all the way up to seniors and they were kind of reading off this little sheet. Um, but, um, but some things I'm just going to tell you that they had in case it's useful. Um, in all their pre-K and kindergarten rooms, they had, um, a bathroom. Yes, an independent bathroom for all those rooms. And then separately from the bathroom, they had two sinks in each classroom. Is that, is that what you saw at the other, at the Harvard place too?
Don't we have, we have that incorporated?
You have. They all have.
It was amazing. So if that, that is a great idea. You can, you can, like you walk into there and you're like, of course.
Um, why wouldn't you do it this way?
Yeah, of course, this makes sense. Um, they had, they also had a, they had a gym for the bigger kids that was kind of a regular gym that could be separated, like you're expecting to see. Um, and then they had a gym for the smaller kids that were just smaller. And also everything was padded, including the floor. And, and I don't mean like padded, like in a insulting way, but I mean, sort of like spongy. So that if a kid falls, they would just be like, oh, and they just kind of be fine. Um, so that.
Make it noise too.
Yeah, yeah. That's what they would say. Um, they had, um. What else did I not mention? They had the.
You talked about the rain, the rain.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so I mean, the, all this stuff was beautiful. Every room didn't even have any chalkboards. They just had smart boards that you could write on instead. Um, and, and that was constant throughout the whole place. But the thing I was really interested in seeing there was how they were doing, you know, you know, triple net zero. Um, so that's what I was looking for when I was there and I did get to talk to Peter Light, the superintendent when I was there. Um, and I asked him how he pulled it off and how, you know, what do we, what we can take away from that. And like you were just saying, Brian, a lot of what he said was we got our timing right. Um, and we were able to afford things that we probably couldn't afford now with the interest rates the way, the way they were then, when they were building. He also said that they had on their school committee, an engineer who was helping them figure out how to do some of the, um, heating. Um, I guess that they went, instead of having all hydrothermal heating, which was kind of their ideal, they ended up doing a hybrid. Um, and then he said that they. They also had, um. They also partnered with, um, with the energy company, um, with, hello.
EverSource.
And thank you, with EverSource, um, to make sure they had a consultancy to think about how they could do that well. Um, so they, so they had all those things. I hope we can do the consultancy. I understand that those other things are kind of off the table and especially with. Inflation, the way it's been this year and building materials being much more expensive. I get that that's harder. Um, but things that seems like we could attain them, um, he, that the whole roof collects rain. And then it goes down into a rain tank that is underground. Um, and then that is what they use to flush their toilets. So, so I think that seems.
That's kind of cool.
Novice point of view, like maybe not that expensive. Um, and they obviously have solar panels and they also had. This, I never heard of this before. Two things I never heard of before. They had these panels above their windows so that. It was like when it's very sunny in the summer, it's not too hot in the classroom. And when it's very sunny in the winter, it's potentially absorbing the heat enough to keep it nice in the classroom. Um, that's one thing. And then they also had a special kind of. Not pavement, but something close to it so that when rain hits it, it can still absorb into the ground and not just bounce into the sewer. Um, so those are some of the features over there at the Douglas and Gates new school, which I think they're calling the Boardwalk School.
Thank you for sharing that. One other thing, you made me think of it, when, when you mentioned. The ground and the, the pavement. They were really smart and Rob noticed this and sort of pointed it out at the Harvard Elementary School. In terms of the playground areas are adjacent to the building and a large portion of it is plowable. So that unless it's a really, really bad weather, they can clear it and the kids can be outside. So I thought, that was, that was good. That was.
That is good. And the other thing I, you reminded me to tell you, and I'm not sure, they, they had an outdoor, almost like a. Like if you've ever gone to like a outdoor education area and like, like, you know, I'm going to learn about wolves or one of those.
Oh, yeah.
Places and they have sort of those raised steps where kids can sit.
I was just gonna mention that, that they have that like, um, like a, like, like wetlands, kind of.
Where you can have like class outside if you're interested in having class outside, which, and it was, and that was obviously nice. And of course, the playground itself, which is right next to the school was all. It looked like it was all recycled materials. Oh, and another thing you said actually that seems sustainable to us too. He said they saved a lot of money by reusing building materials from the buildings that they were tearing down. Um, yeah, so that was another thing we can potentially look into.
Yeah.
Rob was, was nodding his head. Did Havert do the same thing?
I, I don't know about reusing the building materials because it was a, it was, their building was like green metal. It was pretty dated, but I wonder if there are things internal.
Like in the newer side, I'm not like the nineteen eighty side. I don't know if there's.
Yeah.
Take a, Rob, did you have a comment?
He's muted, so.
No, he said thumbs up. He's.
Okay, alright, doesn't want to talk.
Beth, I, I think that, that part, yeah, I'm glad you had, mentioned at the end, I saw that the outdoor piece, I don't know because they have like green meadow where it's at. There is a lot of like, you know. Nature back there and I didn't know with, if there would be an opportunity to have, like, like, it's like a boardwalk kind of, um, around there.
They have a boardwalk, but they also have this little.
Right.
This little place where you can sit. And what I thought when I was there is I thought. The place like, like you're saying, it's like green meadow is beautiful also. Like, it's beautiful looking out this buil-, this building, but it's also beautiful looking out here, right next to.
Right.
So, so, yeah, I think we can make something that is as impressive as that. When you look outside, you're like, wow, so lucky to be here.
That's what we want. So lucky to be here. I like that.
Beth, thanks for going.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Right. Um, let's move on to superintendent goals. Brian, take it away.
Hopefully you had a chance to look at them. Um, I know I communicated with Hillary. Over the weekend possibly, um, or maybe Monday. I forget exactly what day it was, to be quite honest. Um. So we've been working on, I've been working on these, working with some of the leadership team with Charles. Um, really waiting to make sure that they aligned with the district goals. So once the district goals got done, I confirmed these up to propose them to you. Um, so you can see I used the same format. That seems like it went well, um, for the district goals. And then tried to put them where I sort of felt like they complimented the district goal. Um, so then the administrator goals complement my goals and teacher's goals, et cetera. They just kind of, they all align, if you will.
Do you want to share them or?
You have, um. Is that, it's in there. It is in the folder. Oh, that is enough. They're not my goals. Those look like laws. But I do like them. They're very neat and organized. But there's a lot of sections.
And just while you're doing that, for, for the rest of the board, I, um, I uploaded, um, mask superintendent evaluation, that packet of like instruction, just so. Um, I, I found it helpful myself, like look at. The steps of what we need to do. So we're not looking at it at the end of the year to kind of see like, what do we need to, what do we miss? Um, and it was goal setting and then we also, um, do need to. Um, align them to standards. And then evidence. So those are the three things that need to get done sooner rather than later. So once the goals are set, then they, um. It's on page seven and, and eight of that, that, um, mask superintendent. There, it talks about what the next, so you said that the goals get set, then it's, we have to consider the standards. Um, which they're twenty, we have to, you know, decide on, you know, how many, I think we've. You, you know, you don't do all of them, but like, what are those that we would, um, agree on? And then, um. After that, you have to, it says, keep in mind that the superintendent must be evaluated on every standard. So if your choice, you need to. The indicators, that's where you have to kind of like see where the indicators align with the standards. And then we would, then we'd have to discuss the, the evidence. Um, also, um, so just sending it for, for the school committee. And then there is in that same packet, which I thought was helpful. Um, one page, which we've probably never really followed with fidelity, but it, um. Talks about the, the timeline, the steps. So maybe it might be helpful. Um, you know, Mara, I know we, we talked a little bit in the personnel subcommittee as well, but maybe this is something we can kind of. Keep, um, in track as well to monitor and how we go through that. So anyway, I just wanted to put out there, it's in the, it's in the folder today.
So that, what you're saying is that stuff that we do after we approve these goals?
Goals, the way it writes goals, then you have to, um, goals, standards and, um. And indicators.
Right, okay.
And evidence, sorry, evidence is how it was. So those are the things that. Before, before everything is implemented. And if it looks at. I think on page seven of that superintendent packet is first set the goals. And then. You, you know, we discuss outcomes and all, all of that. And then the discussion next, consider the standards. Once the goals are set, you consider the second part of the. The two-part tool. Um, there are twenty indicators and then it goes into instructions about those. And then it says, keep in mind, superintendent must be evaluated on, on every standard. So your choices, make sure that at least one indicator for each standard is selected. And then, um, then we discuss the evidence. So I think at some point. Once the goals are set, it probably makes sense to put it into that other format, right? Um, that we end up having to use anyway at the end of the year.
Right.
Um, just so we're not trying to make it like squeeze it. Um, we can just work off of that as a. Place. Anyway, just wanted to share what, a little bit more of our procedural stuff that we need to think about.
So the logistics are doing the goals tonight and then maybe do a workshop for the other pieces, like very quickly?
We need a workshop. I think. I would recommend that we comment on these goals tonight and then we have, oh, until the next meeting to finalize them and then approve them then. Um, and then. According to that page, then the next step is thinking about the indicators. And after they're approved. And then when you think about the indicators, you're thinking about which you want to focus on and how you want to measure those. So it's the goals first, then the indicators that are focused and then, and then, and in that conversation, thinking about what evidence you want for those, um, step.
Right, yeah, exactly. But that's where I was looking at that, that timeline of like what, you know, what that, how that looks for us to do. So we can make sure that we're. Doing what we need before the end of the year.
So then I think, right, so I think that we should prioritize making sure that these get, um, voted on next time. And then, um, by next time, potentially. Tell Brian which are the folk, what, what, which are the standards we want to focus on, which indicators and each standard we want to focus on this year, based on his evaluation from last year potentially. Um, and have recommendations for what kinds of, um, evidence we'd like to see for those indicators. So that is all clear in the beginning of the year. Um, just as recommendations. And then I think, Brian, you would fill in like, yes, you know, these are the things I'd like to put in as evidence. And then I think we go from there.
Because that, that's, does seem like that's the piece that is always disconnected or has been for the last.
Right.
Years is the indicators and how they ru-, report back to even these goals.
But I also think that you can, you can also connect these goals to the standards, you know, you, if, if these goals are working, right? Then they are already part of the standard. So you can think about that too. You don't have to, you, you don't have to keep them disconnect, you don't have to pretend.
It, it should align pretty well. Yeah.
I think it's useful to say. When you revise it, to say which of the standards and indicators you think you're hitting with these also. And then we can also focus on the standards and indicators separately that we want to focus on. So we're not doing that whole rubric like we did last year.
Right.
And the evidence should, should be getting pulled from these action items. Is that, isn't that correct?
Well, the, well, that's for the goal. Again, so there's goals and then there's also that, this is, we have to evaluate Brian's ability to hit these goals, but also his job. And his job is, his goal, his job is, is what is being hit with the standards.
All the standards, right.
So then, so then it's like every educator has two things. I have my job that I'm always doing, but I also have these things I'd like to use to push myself. And to like, and to further the district education. So, so the goals are here and also my, my central job. How's that going?
And it does say just for, he says, I, when he talks about discuss the evidence, at this point, it'd be very helpful to discuss the evidence that was superintendent provide to show progress on goals and implementation of standards. So that's how it reads for everyone's, so it could be evidence for both. So that's how it reads for everyone's, so it could be evidence for both, um, that might be needed through the year.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, I mean, yeah, right. So you can, you can submit, you know, when you submit your evidence, you can be like, I think that this one thing I did shows that I accomplished this goal and that I, I also.
Right.
You know, it's not so one to one, it can be.
Exactly.
Thing, it does a lot of things at once, you know?
Yes, absolutely. And that's what teachers do. I mean, they submit evidence and they attach it to a standard and an indicator. They don't necessarily do thirty-seven indicators, but
Right.
They hit the four standards. Yes.
So we're talking about being in like the middle to late November before we get that finalized.
Yeah, well, yep. Yeah, I mean, I think it's going to be the second meeting of November that we have it all finalized. This, I think we can get the goals done by the first meeting of November. But I think that the rest of it, unless we work magic, which we could, I mean, we could do something like, you know, everyone's can look at all the indicators again and highlight based on his feedback from last year and our goals this year for as a district, which of the indicators we think you should focus on and which kinds of, um, evidence you'd like to see from him. Right? And then Brian, you can, we can say, here's what we're thinking and you can say, great, here's what I was thinking. And then we, if we're all kind of aligned by the eight, by the next meeting, then maybe we can just go ahead.
So you're thinking maybe by the next meeting, we'll be able to potentially vote on the goals and have the indicators already also part of that.
Right, devote as well. Right, as long as we do the pre-work where we're all kind of gathering the, everything together, again, through one person, so we're not breaking any laws.
Brian, how does that sound to you?
I like, I, I think Elizabeth is correct. That's, it's a big, it's a big lift, but I don't think it's unreasonable. Um, if we can get everybody to send their info, even for the school committee, for example, to send it to whoever wants to volunteer, to sort of tally that information, if you will. You can share it with me. I will obviously go back and add it standards and indicators to the goals once, you know, I get comments from you. Make sure that they're on point or if they need to be adjusted.
I wonder if in, in this instance, if it makes sense that we just send it to you, so you can see here, like, all of our different, and then you can kind of then incorporate that. Oh, no, no, no.
I don't know. But also, maybe it doesn't matter if we wait a little long. So I think the goals are important to get together first. But then maybe it's okay to wait for the next meeting and then just take it easy. You know, everybody, you know, if we come to the next meeting and say, these are the indicator, like, these are the indicators we're thinking, you know? I think.
I can work it that way as well.
Yeah, and then, and then that way, maybe it's a little less.
There's enough going on between just normal doing the job and everything we're doing for district goals and then superintendent goals. Hopefully, everything that's happening between the district goals and the superintendent goals, in effect, addresses the standards and the majority of indicators. They're not, they're different, but there's overlap.
Right, because the, right, because the goals are the things that are unique every year and those are good to get in place as soon as possible, but the, the job being done through these indicators is just enrolling. So no matter, you know, like if we say two weeks later, that these are things we want to focus on, your, your evaluation on, that shouldn't matter very much because the job is still being done. Right. What do you think about that, Natasha?
I think I understood that made sense. Um, I just want to make sure that the part that we reserve space for is agreeing on evidence earlier on, because I don't want to, you know, I don't want that to be a surprise later on. So however, you know, we, we do that once those indicators are decided. That we, we, you know, we consider what that is, because I want to make sure that Brian doesn't feel like we asked for something like six months from now that he wasn't considering or we're getting evidence that we envisioned something different. So I want to make sure that is kind of, um, thought about earlier on as well. And, um, and that will also help us, the monitoring piece that we're trying to talk about a little bit more during the year, um, so that we're aligned with what we're, should be asking, we're looking for. Or if there's other, other pieces we need to pivot, I think it'll help inform the, the mid-year, which is going to be.
Sorry, I thought, I didn't mean to interrupt. Um, I keep doing it. I don't know what's going on today.
That's okay.
Uh, so if, um, if we say, if everyone for the next meeting, uh, comes with or puts in the folder, I get, well, I guess we can't put in the folder, comes with which of the standards, which indicator of each standard they'd like to focus on, um, and thinks about what they'd like to measure it with. Then potentially we can have that conversation at our next meeting. What do you think?
The only thing I would worry about is that we would have to have a better understanding of the goals with certainty. In order to, you know, so if we're, we haven't talked about the goals yet, but I, if we're, the conversations after tonight are like, we want something changed, um, that will impact, you know, what that indicator might be. So that's, that's the only thing.
I don't think it should, it should, but I don't think it will, because again, indicators are more like, this is the job in general.
The standards.
The goals, right. Um, so I think, I think it should be okay. Um, but also if you want to talk about how we can do it in the subcommittee instead, we can also talk about that, but.
Well, or the other choice is to have an extra meeting in November, because part of me is thinking we do Brian's mid-year evaluation in January and is this a disservice to him to not have all the pieces in place?
Yeah.
Um, because it'll already be November. So we don't have anything going on the tenth of November, or maybe we do the tenth instead of, you know, I'm just throwing that out there. Because we're falling into the same pattern as we continue. Nobody's fault, but we really need.
No, I, I think we, we should set up, I think we should set, maybe offline, but let's do that. Maybe we do have a workshop amongst ourselves. Um, and Mary, I, I think it is, I think we, we delayed it earlier on, the other workshop, and I think that's where we are, where we are. So, um.
I love a workshop. Let's do it.
Yeah, I think the workshop would be beneficial.
Alright, so that, you think the tenth?
Yeah, well, I'm just looking, there's nothing on that Thursday if everybody, you know, but we can, to Natasha's point, we can do it offline and maybe, yeah.
So what we're saying is we're committing to a workshop before, so, um, not before the next meeting.
No, correct. After the next meeting.
After the next.
Following Thursday.
Yeah.
That works for everybody.
Is that a holiday? Is that a holiday?
Nope. No, the eleventh is Veterans Day, Friday. No, that's, Natasha, that's the day that we decided we're doing the person, the next personnel meeting.
Oh, that's right. I was saying, I knew that, 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 okay, that's what it is. Alright, so we can, maybe we'll just do it right after.
Yeah. And then would Brian be there, do you think? Would that be a Brian also meeting or would that, it might be useful just to get it all hashed out?
I think it would be helpful to have Brian there because then, you know, if, if he's envisioning something, like we can speak to expectations a little bit better than having to wait to reconvene. Um, I don't know, Brian, is that, are you available the evening of, after the personnel subcommittee meeting that, that evening?
And I just threw that out if it's a different. And can we have it in person?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Does that work, Brian?
And, you know, limited to an hour and a half. And then, and everyone has to come with ideas and then just kind of hash it out.
Think it would facilitate it faster.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, so now getting back to the stuff here.
Yeah, here we go.
Brian, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Hopefully you've seen these. The first goal, um, is to facilitate, really to focus on the pathways. So measuring the progress of the high school pathway initiatives, um, the W A V M, the Global Scholars Pathway and the Emerging Computer Science Pathway. Uh, and report and arrange presentations and recommendations by March to the school committee. And I know you have this, so I'm not going to read the whole document to you, um, because you'll be able to comment on it and send it, but then it talks about monitoring progress, what's going to happen. The sooner we decide on goals, the sooner, you know, these can become a little more reality. And then finally, measuring impact, um, which would be just a different word for evidence, I believe. Um, but again, everything's up for discussion.
We want to go through each one, maybe that might be a, that's a better approach. Um, so goal one. And then maybe everyone can give some thoughts on things that I don't like.
Yeah.
However you want to do it.
Uh, yeah, another question is, what should we say, what should we do now in this meeting and what should we put in writing before the next meeting?
Whatever you can put in writing is probably more beneficial to me, to be quite honest, because then I have it and I can process it and I can work it into this.
I think maybe now we would want to ask clarifying questions, right? Are we understanding, that's what I want to make sure. Like if you're, what you're intent, like if there's something here intending, um, and then that will help inform, maybe there's clarifying aspects versus substantive changes. But if there are substantive changes, I think that's also important to, to say, and, you know, I want to hear what they are from anyone else as well. And why that would be.
Yeah, I think that any substantive changes and clarifying questions are great. Any other ideas what we should talk about now versus what we've put in writing?
Okay. You want to go to number one or do you want to hear them all? How would you like to proceed?
Can you start with one and and then the, your goal, first goal?
That's what I just went over.
The bench, oh, oh, I'm sorry, I thought.
No, that's, that's what I just talked through was goal one.
Um, you want to run this?
Mara, do you want to just go around, ask and see if everyone?
Oh, yeah, sure. Okay. Um, does, does anybody have, um, Elizabeth, oh, Mary? Oh, yeah, I think we probably all do. It's more, um, so the, um, in, they're all associated with the high school, right? I didn't know if, if the.
For this goal.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I didn't know if it would also like include math or is that like a totally separate thing because it's being done separately?
So I didn't put math down for myself as a superintendent goal, because I feel like that is one of, that was the district goal.
Right. That's why I thought it should be in here because it is a district goal and going down, but it, it's just for clarification, because, yeah.
So I think, and, oh, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say that's K through twelve versus, you know, these are all initiatives, which is great, you know, I love our high school, but to, the math is more the vertical, um, scenario, so I didn't know. But I don't want to put too much on you. I just figured math is already in there, so for you to also be part of that, but, um, I'll send that note to you and you can just do what you want with it. And then my other one was, um, what is the overall, this is where I have the hottest time with the, the SMAC goals. What's the overall goal of these, I guess, is the other, and maybe I send that to you too. Is it, is it come to us with a presentation of what staff is needed or, um, like, for instance, W A V M? Um, is it W A V M? Um, how it's, how the PEG access scenario is going to alter W A V M? I mean, there's, there's just some, um, vagueness about some of the details, so.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll put those in writing to you also.
Okay, so, thank you.
Elizabeth?
Thanks. Um, I, I just wanted to go next because I, what Mary was saying is very much in line with what I was thinking.
Yeah, I was actually going to say the same thing, so, um, good, good.
So good. I mean, that's good, the wrong safe page. I think, um, I was surprised, you know, I think there's so much alignment before that and then I guess what I expected to see third would be that you would be thinking about the, you know, about what she's saying, like about math or about literacy. Um, so I thought my, I guess my, I have two things, a clarifying question and that leads into potentially a substance change, um, which is that, um, I'm, I'm wondering why you chose pathways. Um, because to me, it seems like the more logical way, place to go would be to figure out a way to monitor how we're doing with literacy project, program and how we are implementing it. Figuring out how to make it better as we, as we move forward with it and then use that as a way, as like a, as a baseline to then monitor how we're doing on math and then anything else we come up against as we keep going. So, so it seemed like that would be the, that where that would be heading based on, um, the district goals and the, and the initiative for the year. Um, but if, but maybe, I don't know what I don't know about pathways and why you chose it.
So I can, and I could really go either way. If you decided you don't want to focus on pathways and you really want to focus on literacy, I could do that. That's fine with me. I figured it, so my thought process was the literacy is underway. We have lots of people working on it. We just spent a hundred thousand dollars to support it. And we have math, which is our, being overseen really by our new director of curriculum. So those two areas, as important as they are, and they are super important, seem like they have attention devoted to them already. And I didn't want to just honestly go on the coattails of that. But I could see why I'm, I'm involved in that. So in conversations that we've had since I started in Maynard was all around the pathways. Um, and we've talked about pathways and we haven't really expanded them. We've sort of talked around them. COVID was sort of the driving factor, I think, in sort of lack of movement on them. But we were able to then say, you know what? COVID's kind of over. We have W A V M. It's a chapter seventy-four program. How do we need to flush that out a little bit? We just added the global scholars for this year with all these, with the international students, with expanding world language and making that an authentic pathway. And we have staff that are on board with that, but it's, it's in its infancy stages. And then we have staff that are really excited and kids that are really excited about the computer science pathway, but it's on the, it's just emerging. It's exciting. So that's why I was like, I wouldn't really be interested in moving those initiatives forward. But like I said, they're all important. We need the literacy, we need the math and the pathways will come. I just felt like though, we always say they'll come and then it's next year and then they'll come next year. So I was like, I don't know, let's focus, let me focus on that. But if the committee and its, you know, infinite wisdom says, you know, focus on literacy, that's really where you should be. There's nothing wrong with that.
I mean, I appreciate that you think with infinite wisdom. That's nice. I was, I, but I was, I think what I was, what I, what I guess I mean is, I would love to see whatever happens, and I'm sure, you know, and Mary talks about this all the time. Whatever happens, it'd be nice to just set something up that will help Maynard continue on a, like, on some kind of pathway that will, pathway, that will, um, that will allow it to continue to be better and better. So, you know, if we are, you have established the literacy programs and we are establishing a way, you know, a new math curriculum, right? So then how do we make sure those are doing well? Um, how do we monitor those? And then, and then next we'll do another core curriculum, I imagine, and then next another. And so then we have, we have potentially a basis for understanding how to make sure that the things we implement are doing well and have some kind of staying power. So that no matter what happens in Maynard, as all of, you know, as everybody, God forbid, comes and goes, we have some kind of standard that we're trying to meet with all of our curriculum is kind of what I was thinking. But I hear what you're saying about, about pathways and that, like, what are, you know, thinking more thoroughly about what they're for and what kids get out of them. And even maybe they do tie into the curriculum that you're building, um, is another thing to think about.
Okay. I, I'm wondering if there's a way that we can do the literacy and the math part of it with the standards that we need to do for him.
Hmm, okay.
Um, so he's still, because I agree, Brian, that, you know, we keep, we do keep talking about this. I mean, we've been talking about the, you know, computer science for, you know, at least four or five years. Um, you know, we, we do have W A V M. You know, we've also talked, what's not in here that we have also talked about is the engineering part of it. But I, I just, and I do think that we need to actually do something instead of just talking about it. So I, I do like that you're, that you're taking the initiative to do this, but as, you know, the other members have mentioned, when I went, got to this box, I was like, wait, I thought we were doing math. So, um, so I'm wondering whether or not we can maybe focus on the literacy and math, um, and somehow bring that into our standards and then indicators and then evidence. So that we're still doing all of those things.
Gosh, I keep misunderstanding what people are doing, but yes, I do think that's really clever. I think that's a really good idea. And especially because it sounds like, Brian, you're very interested in the pathways and making sure that they do. Um, and that, but I do think then, I guess the only substantive change if we keep this, this idea for the goal would be that the end game, as Mary mentioned, is not just like a presentation to us, but some kind of, you know, I would, I would maybe think of something like, so what, a kid gets, this takes this pathway and so what, what does it do for them? You know, getting back to the idea of, you know, how does this serve students' learning? Um, you know, how does this, or why would they ever want to take this? Do they get something out of this that helps them in any way outside of college, outside of high school? Yeah, so we can, I can, that, that, those kinds of things in writing. Are you, so it sounds like you are excited about the pathways, is that?
I am, right?
Yeah.
I'm with you, absolutely. Yeah.
And I, and I don't want it to sound like I am putting math and literacy on a back burner. I just feel like we have a lot of people working on them already.
Yeah.
So to your point, I think I'm part of that and that can be part of, um, Mark Sinoply is excited about that. He's a science cat way as well. Thank you, Mark. Um, we can definitely connect that to the standards and indicators now.
Yeah.
We can work on that. So thank you for those comments.
Natasha?
Yeah, so I, um, when I was, I was looking at a line, looking for alignment as well, just kind of going back when I saw the, the goal or the, the district level ones. And then I do know that, uh, W A V M actually does start though in, in middle school, um, as well, right? So it's not just high school only.
Well, it's the club. I think the clubs are for W A V M start in sixth grade. And the certification is from ninth grade to.
Nine through all, so it's.
Right.
So I, I guess I would equally to echo, what, how do we factor in more of the other schools as well? To Mary's point earlier, I would really want to make sure that those efforts. To Mary's point earlier, I would really want to make sure that those efforts, we pathways, I, I, I love those conversations. Um, I think literacy and math are the things that do align through all, all schools. And that's where it feels like, um, there should be some, some aspect of that here. And I think the part that we sometimes miss when we do, um, start new initiatives is that monitoring piece. So I know that you talked about, we have all that money that's invested in literacy, but it's not really, we haven't, we haven't seen, I mean, I saw our MCAS results, which is not the greatest measure of things, but there's, the outcomes are still, you know, yet to be determined, right? How effective the, some of that work is. And so I wonder if, um, there could be an aspect of the, um, MTSS, like the data team or some, some of that, because that was looking at some of those pieces as well, right? Of what, how those decision, because right now, as I read it, it just, you know, very loosely says, I will facilitate meetings. Um, and, and I think that you're doing more than that. So I don't think that really speaks to actually what your goal is, right? You're doing just beyond meeting. There are the benchmarks, but I, I think I would want to see a little bit more, um, um, broader sense of incorporating, I would like to see more math and literacy in, in the goal, if that's possible. And, um, and maybe start speaking about, you know, um, maybe one of the bench, like talk about, um, a, um, a pathway like sketch, I don't know. And then we can have that be one of the benchmarks, right? Is create like, I don't know if it's a committee or however you want to do that, because that's going to take a process to do, right? It's not going to happen overnight anyway. And so I think there needs to be that concrete measurement of, of starting those things because, so we're not, you know, pushing it down. But I don't want to lose sight of the math piece that we've been focusing on and the literacy piece that really isn't kind of brought home quite yet.
Natasha, what is, what about Maro's idea that the goal stays on pathways? And then we make sure that we're putting into the standards and indicators that we've chosen, uh, an indication to Brian that we expect to see that he is measuring the outcome of the literacy in the map. And that, so that that is still how he's being evaluated at the end of the year and we're still monitoring that and we're still thinking about it. But his goal is this pathway work.
What, um, what?
It's still happening.
What about, okay, so I guess the monitoring for literacy, I could see where that may, may be an easier pivot to, um, a standard. Um, because that is kind of like, you know, the structure is already there, right? It's just that monitoring piece that needs to continue on with, with that. I think having the math in the goal in some way does bring alignment to what the, the goals we've already set. I just feel like there's missing alignment. Um, and I think that we've committed to making sure we put that work into doing that to make sure there's alignment. And if there's a way we can incorporate, um, math in those pieces in some better way, that makes, for me, makes me feel like at least we're incorporating, um, aspects of the, all the schools, um, into that goal a little bit better. Um, and, and beyond.
How would you put math into this goal?
Well, maybe some of those, um, some of those, I don't know, maybe we don't get so aggressive in, in looking at all those path, you know, W, like, I don't know how we would want to prioritize which ones we would want to, you know, consider. Uh, the global scholars, uh, I know we've talked a little bit about it through the past year. So, and then there's the, you know, the computer science, maybe the computer science one is, is one I know we've kind of gone back a lot for. And I think that also possibly, I don't know if there is an opportunity or, um, there was talk at one point with Fowler, like, you know, having some of that alignment with from Fowler to the high school, right, of some classes. I don't know if that with the engineering and the, uh, maker space, I don't know if that at all can be incorporated in any way. So I don't know. I just, I would leave.
Want to put a benchmark or two in there about math and not forgetting about math.
I, I, I would like to see some math somewhere reflected in there because it does kind of tie in all the schools.
So are you gonna send it to Brian? Are you gonna send an idea to Brian so that he has an idea of what?
Well, I wanted to hear his feedback first. I don't want to, I, you know, what, how does that? Want to have a discussion.
They're related. It's a little, um, I just, I need to really process it through. To me, the pathways are sort of entities unto themselves. They connect to math. They connect to literacy. Like if I think, you know, they all are interrelated at some levels. So I guess a clarifying question, when you're talking about, um, measuring math per se and the benchmarks in math, are we talking about the new math curriculum? Are we talking about which we don't have yet? What is, because math, we're just exploring this year. So we don't have a new math curriculum per se. But in literacy, we have a new literacy curriculum, which obviously the M C S scores don't connect to that because we just got the curriculum. So we could, and we are looking at, so how are we implementing that? I mean, this year, we're really looking at professional development to help all the staff in, implement the new materials with fidelity. So I, and we can share all that out. That does connect to standards and indicators in terms of instructional practices. Absolutely. But did you have something, I guess I was trying to think specifically in terms of math because of part of the district goal, we definitely have math on there. But I feel like this is the year where we're doing all of our research in terms of what's working, what's not working, looking at making a purchase in the near future, like next year in terms of math. But did you have something in particular that you wanted me to include? I'm open to that. I'm just trying to understand it better.
Well, I was just wondering how we can have alignment in, in what was already, that's what I was missing.
Okay. Let me work on that. Alignment with math. Okay. Let me.
Alignment with the district goals that were kind of created. So if it's really right now, just that introductory phase that you're talking about, is it about, you know, maybe establishing a pilot or a timeline, you know, things like that, that, um, you know, we want to hear, you know, um, a little bit more about, because I think that's what has to happen, right? That's what the steps that started with the literacy, um, a little bit where you, you, you know, you kind of. Set up.
So let me ask, yep.
Yep.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
If that, because I think what you're asking is what's in, for the most part, what's in the district goals around the math, about setting up the committee. And so I didn't want to duplicate those efforts and take credit. I mean, I'm part of that. Don't get me wrong. Chuck and I talk about this. Charles and I talk about this. Um, we're all on that team, you know, in terms of that. But it didn't feel like it was right to say, hey, that's my goal too now.
Right.
I like Maro's idea.
If there's an aspect of it, I absolutely am open to it. We both need to think about it a little. I'm okay thinking.
Yeah. No, I, I, I guess it's just like, when I look at your benchmarks, I do like a lot of the benchmark, like engaging. Those are things I think some, some aspects we didn't do with like the literacy as, as much, you know, the stakeholders and, and those kind of pieces. So I do like some of those benchmarks as it relates to how you're exploring, you know, math or whatever. But like you said, it, there is some overlap.
Um, I, I do think that there was overlap. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I can, I'll send over some, some additional thoughts a little bit, just hearing what you've, what you've shared.
That would be helpful.
As an individual, though, I do like the fact that we are, I do like the initiatives for the, the pathways. Cause again, you know, W A V M is, I think, didn't, did our first class just graduate with the certificate? Has it started?
Seal by literacy?
Eight, um, no, the W A V M certificate.
W A V M.
The chapter 74.
Yes.
We just had our first class graduate, right? Because it started in 2018. So I think like, yeah, so that's well underway. So.
Third, third class.
Is it the third class that's actually graduated, Charles?
Yeah.
Chuck? Okay. Um, and then the global scholars, I mean, Jen is, there's an awful lot of work already in progress for that. So.
Yes.
Um, and then the computer science, to everybody's point, we've been talking about this for a while. So, um, I do like those. It's just, again, if, if we could incorporate, um, the math.
Is that, is that a lot though? I just wondering, that's a lot of, is that overly aggressive though? All those pathway? I just also want to ask.
Phases, I guess I would say, so like the W A V M is well underway. The global scholars pathway is beginning. It's in its infancy, but it's up and running. Um, and the computer science is emerging, but we have some really excited, dedicated staff who have been sort of chomping at the bit for this one. I mean, Mark Senopoli is ready to get this up and going. He spent the last couple of days at Mass Q down at Gillette. And, and I was there yesterday. Chuck was there today. Great experience. So it is a lot, but they're in different phases. So it's sort of different benchmarks for each one. And I think we can connect to math, most definitely, and connect to followers. So there's some alignment with them. But you, some of your ideas, I'll send you mine. We'll work, we'll work it through.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay. Now are we going to the next one? Unless other people have anything else for, for this first one?
Nope. Just put it in writing.
Yeah. Send me what you can. That would be great. Um, so this is, a lot of, so this is all about the ready initiative from DESI, which is the racial equity, diversity, inclusion initiative. Um, we are parts, we applied and we got accepted. So I'm happy to say we're one of maybe a hundred districts, uh, maybe less. I forget the exact number that are participating in this professional development. And it's really facilitating a Maynard diversity, equity, inclusion committee, which includes the use of surveys and data and parents, um, giving them an opportunity to participate in the initiative as well, to inform the committee. And with the goal being to propose curricular recommendations. What you guys think about that?
Yeah, I, I have, um, I just want to be clear that we all understand that that is separate from the sub, the school committee, D E I subcommittee. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands they're separate. And, um, second, I, I was wondering if you, just since we're here, can you talk us through with the ready initiative, you know, getting that means for you? What does that look like for the year?
So it's, the program itself is multiple full, it's four full days. A group of, uh, virtual half days to really focus on, they call it ready, but sort of belonging. That's kind of the overarching category in terms of the racial diversity, equity, inclusion, and really focusing on belonging. And it sort of starts with us doing that ourselves as adults. And then what are we doing within the district? And it was interesting that we've had one day so far, um, earlier this month where we met as a group, uh, big group. Um, they break us down into smaller groups. Uh, one of the interesting things was the facilitators, facilitator said, this is really an eight to 10 year process. You're not going to see much in a year or two. You will see change. You have to stick with it, but it's a slow process. And if you're expecting big changes by like hiring a D E I expert and coming in and expecting something to change in a year or two and see that, it doesn't work that way. It's the grassroots effort. It's being strategic about it and sticking with it. Um, day in and day out, year after year, slow but sure. And I, I was a little surprised at the eight to 10, um, to be honest, but it made sense. I mean, the consultant that we worked with a little bit the year before, um, Mr. Jones had said the same thing, maybe in different words. He says, you know, slow and steady wins the race. It's one of his mantras. Um, it just doesn't happen quickly. So for us, it's really understanding what does that mean for us? You know, we're in this, and it's interesting. What I think is helpful is being in a room with other districts that are our size. So there are other districts like Littleton, Harvard, Acton, Boxborough, um, Concord, Carlisle. I know they're a little bit bigger, but they have a lot of similarities in the sense, and also there, I mean, LOLs there, Chelsea, some big districts. So we're a small, relatively speaking, a small, again, relatively speaking, affluent, homogeneous white community. So what does this look like for our community as compared to a Worcester public school? Um, and really sort of figuring that out. And I don't have that, that answer yet. That's hopefully, that's what I want to learn more about. Um, but I did like there, it's about belonging and that's kids feeling like they belong in school, adults feeling like they're supported and they belong within the district and the district feeling, you know, they belong in the town and we fit and we're working together.
So, sorry, that, so the ready training is for the admin, for you as the superintendent and who else is involved in the training?
You can bring a team. I have Chuck coming with me at this point because we have a lot of things going on and I'm, we're a small district. It's hard. I mean, that's probably the challenge is I don't have, um, necessarily a big group.
Okay. And then, and then I'm thinking Chuck about the podcast that I, that I listened to and you listened to, too, about how like when you're screwing up D E I is when you're thinking only about educating people so they understand what it is and not thinking about the implementation of it. So I'm, I'm, I am imagining that ready is thinking about that too. So what is the end goal of implementation as far as they're concerned when they're doing this training?
Well, their end goal, I believe, is to have more belonging across the state in all systems.
But that's, but how does it trickle? Like, how does it, what is the logistics of how it trickles down? If they, they.
That is the training. I don't know. I mean, they didn't.
Okay. So that's part of.
You're asking the right question. I just have only been there one day. I don't know the answer yet.
Okay. I didn't know if they were like, here's the curriculum. Here's kind of what you have to look forward to.
No.
Okay.
They have not.
If, if I may, the, the ready, it's, uh, racial equity, diversity and inclusion is what ready stands for. It's a, a process that the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents has, uh, put forward. And you can find the guidebook that we're working from online very easily. It's about 40 pages long with links and links and links. Um, so if you want to get some sense of their blueprint, uh, I think districts go through a data gathering process, educational processes, training processes, piloting. It, it takes a long time to do those steps thoughtfully. And, uh, rather than trying to, I guess, kind of rush to a spot where it's maybe, uh, a mile wide and a half an inch thick.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I'll, I'll look into that. And, um, and I just, I guess my biggest feedback about this one is, well, I guess there are two. There should probably some, we should talk more about how this group was going to interact with the school committee, sub, uh, subcommittee, D E I subcommittee. Um, and then, um, I guess my biggest, if you can go back up to the, the way that the goal is written, um, I think, like the, the, I, from my understanding, especially with the survey that we're giving out this year, um, and the data we're collecting, this subcommittee will be better serving our community if they're looking not at curriculum, but at structural changes that they, that can be made to, as you're saying, make sure kids feel more like they belong. And that, and to, and to really evaluate and, and as, you know, how, how our school is serving or failing to serve all different kinds of communities of students. So, okay, that, that seems like curricular seems off topic, but all the data and having that particular group of people together will be really valuable in looking at the structure of our district.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, Mary or Natasha? Do you like to go next?
I'm fine. Yeah, I'm fine with this one.
Um, I think there's two things primarily. Thank you for, you know, creating a goal around this that really puts a little bit more substance to what we're, you know, that, I guess that seven to 10 year process that, you know, will continue, um, that journey that will continue on. Um, to the point that Beth just mentioned about curriculum, I, I know this, what I worry when I hear about parents and curriculum, there's two trains of thoughts that come to mind. One is I know we've had feedback about parents wanting to have more understanding of curriculum, like literacy curriculum and, and those things, um, just to understand like what their child is experiencing to be supportive and to build that, that's, you know, school to home partnership to really that. But I also on the 180, I see things that are happening in other states where you have these parent advisory committees that are approving certain curricula. And I just want to make sure like this, 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 these particular, um, aspects or can be very, you know, very sensitive in, in those discussions. And, and, and so I just would want to make sure that as you're thinking about the, this D E I committee that will, um, have a good representation from various stakeholders. How I would want to make, make sure there's very explicit, um, outlined that the, the curriculum is not dictated by necessarily by there, but maybe it would be more of a recommendations or, you know, feedback on how to improve certain things, but not that it would be more of the final word. I mean, the educators, I think, you know, rely. But I do like that, that parent, um, you know, that element of, of, of understanding, um, that needs to happen. I just maybe to Beth's point, the wording on that. So I don't know if your intent was really trying to achieve what I was saying, like just trying to get that, that feedback to support. Um, and maybe it just is, needs a couple of, um, or maybe revision around that part a little bit. Um, I, you know, I just, the, my, maybe my worry is always you see these laws that are getting passed places where parents, you know, that things have to be approved by parents and things are getting denied. And, and I just want to make sure that there's a very clear separation, that that's not expectation of what we're doing here in any capacity relating to anything D E I related.
Thank you.
Um, and then the other part, because it is a different committee than the subcommittee, right? How is that intersecting or not? I guess I was unclear a little bit about that.
We can talk about that more, Brian, if you, if you want, we can talk about.
Yeah, we can figure out how they're going to intersect and how they're going to support one another. And we, and, yeah.
Okay, that, that just maybe it's just some things to think about, like, how do we make sure that there is no, not redundancy, that things, you know, efforts are being more effective and aligned and, and, you know, would that, would this committee report back to the schools, I mean, like, you know, that, that, that would be what I'd want to hear, if that, is that a benchmark that we would want to clarify, if that's the, the expected outcome of, of their recommendations? Is it the recommendations would be going to, to the Subcommittee, to the, to you, or, you know?
Yeah, we can definitely talk about that offline, absolutely. And flesh it out, thank you.
Yeah, nope. And I think, I think that was the other, the only other feedback I had on this one, I think the other, the other one, yeah, I'm good.
Okay, I don't, I don't have any the stuff that I have, I'll just, there are things that I think we've kind of covered that I'll just send to you. So I don't have any more right now. So let's move on to the next one.
This has to do with communication is sort of a big overarching goal. It says, I will communicate with the school committee on a weekly basis using the superintendent memo. Communicate with the school committee using smores at least monthly and facilitate seven to nine presentations with the school committee on relevant topics. Additionally, I'll work with the school committee and the DLT to make better use of subcommittees and include in the broader school committee and school related business to improve outcomes and communication. Suggestions?
Yeah, and also I wanted to say, thank you for all these calls, and I know that I, I, sometimes I, I notice when we get this far into it, how wouldn't everything feels and how it feels very like pointed because of the format and because of our rush for time, you know, feeling about, about time. But, but I do want to acknowledge that you've done some work, good work here and, and thank you. So that's underlying this, I hope that that's clear, okay?
Yes.
But so this one, I think, I think that there, I, I'm going to send it in writing, but I think that there are some things we could solidify here. For example, I'm, I'm, I may say that may, maybe taking out some of the stuff that you're already doing, because it's not a goal, you know, because you're already doing it. And we can just kind of monitor that in the other part of your, but, but then I think that, but I think that the forums that you started are great. And I think that maybe focusing on those would be a good idea, you have them in here, but maybe that's the highlight. And then maybe thinking about defining what they are and why they're important, and then the marketing of them so that people know that they're happening. And then putting them in a place where people can find them later, like we just talked about a little while ago. That's one thing I was thinking, another thing I was thinking is that, was thinking of you and communication in this year. Another thing that's really important to communicate this year is the buildings, the building process. You know, and what's happening with that, and that might be a, a better place to focus because our, our town's going to need to come around that big time and, and not too far in the future. And then there are some action items here about agendas, but those are really, the school committee has to make those and not you, so I think we have to just shift that.
Okay.
And, and, you know, who's making the, the agendas, there's another thing, yep. Yeah, so I think that that's, those, those are my big, you know, revisionist things in this one.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mary?
Um, so yeah, I, the same thing, Brian, I know it seems like we're, we're picking everything apart, but this, Yeoman's work is what you've done, so this, yeah. But so with this one, my concern with it is, it's the district goal says, we're going to continue to build and sustain meaningful, positive relationships among students, parents, blah, blah. And the push out is terrific, but there's not like the reciprocal type of scenario with getting feedback from other than, you know, people, you know, emailing you individually and that, and I don't know if that's something, because the relationship goes both ways. So I don't know if that means you having, you know, a media, an open door like once a month, I, I don't know exactly how to fix it, but it seems like right now it's pushing out, which is phenomenal, and you're doing a really, really good job with that. You and then, you know, having the schools do it, so it's just the reciprocal, if we can make that tangible in some way.
We can, yep, I'll work on that.
That would be great, no, that's my only, my only comment about that one.
Okay, thank you.
Natasha?
I, I think I, on this, probably the feedback that I had shared early in the week about might apply here, just a little bit. I think the, the communication, I know that this, like, for these, just in, and this actually isn't in, I think, one of the benchmarks, but I know it's a continuing. I think just ensuring that the school committee is getting all of these communications that are going to the, through the buildings and the district. So that we, you know, we have awareness of, to be able to answer questions and understand. I think some members do get them, just, but not everyone does. So that, if we, that could be a little bit more flushed out. And when it comes to these community presentations, I think, you know, Beth, like hit it, like the marketing is really, really key on here. I think that I was, I was so excited for the content, I think the team did a fantastic job. I was disappointed that, you know, it, it was kind of buried in, you know, people didn't have that opportunity to build excitement about, about them. And that maybe there would have been, and this is maybe what I was talking about earlier, but having a standalone, you know, communication that outlines what this initiative is so that parents can, you know, look forward to these every month. You know, like, oh, these are, you know, things to kind of like count on with more, you know, like, you know, these are upcoming and they're not just kind of like a random, you know, in three days, we're going to have this thing, it really would want to be something that people can plan on and get excited about. To make them worthwhile and effective, I mean, especially for the content that we're talking about, like mental health and, and all of those, you know, substance. I want to make sure that parents get information as early as possible about these, that we, you know, the work that is put into them is, is really, and then I do appreciate, there is Mary, an opportunity while they're doing it, a Q and A, which was really good. So I loved that, so that does open up that possibility where it's not just a one-way communication, parents can ask questions as well. So it does lend, if we get more parent participation, it does lend for that engagement, you know, for the topics that can, you know, that'll be shared, so if there's a, there's a way to kind of do that or outline that for people to kind of plan on a little bit more for these forums.
If I can follow up on that, Liz York is, I think she's doing a phenomenal job of that, when she sends out her notes, and this is what's going on this month. And she lays it all out so people can really plan it, I really, I, I have appreciated those, so maybe take a lesson from her.
Okay, well, they, there were, there were, so there, the, I did look at like hers, it said, there's a little blurb in like the superintendent and then the high school had a, a little bit of a blurb as well. It just said that they'll be continuing, they'll be holding, invite the communities for a virtual forum on this date, the topic is extracurricula. And it will be Zoom, and so that's kind of where the, it was, I think, lacking some context to, to align it where like the district is continuing to build, you know, relationships and we have these series, like that's where I'd want to expand on what that is a little bit more so that people can understand what they're getting. Because that was a question that I know I got asked, I was like, oh, is this something about, something happening about work, because we've been talking about fields and recreation so much? And I think some people just had that at the front of their mind, like, what's going on? And I was like, no, it's actually, you know, positive, you know, conversations to educate and inform and, and open a dialogue. So I just want to make sure it's presented and marketed in the way that we can have them be most effective for the, for the community and for your work that you're putting into it.
Okay, thank you, I'll work on that.
I'm wondering if there's a way that, you know, some of this marketing piece could be, could be done, not only just emailing out to, to the community, but also using like, you know, Facebook or Instagram or something so that you're, you know, you're putting it out there, because I think that a lot of people do see that. So if you, you know, I don't know if you're on Facebook, but, you know, if you ask a teacher that is on, that, you know, lives in Maynard that is willing to, or a parent or something like that, that's willing to put up, you know, a post on Real Housewives or Maynard Friends or whatever, some of these, the, the Maynard groups that are willing to put out, you know, a post, you know, a couple of weeks in advance. You could make it into an event or something like that. And that way, you know, it's, it's out there, not just for the school committee, the community, but also for the community at large. And you might end up getting, I don't know, other people that might be interested. And I know that that's something that we, we did talk about is trying to, to, you know, get more people involved from the surrounding, you know, community, not just the school community. But I think, you know, there's, there's a big potential to be able to put that out there that I think that we don't take advantage of. And if you, you know, if it does, you know, make it into an event, you know, that people are, you know, saying, oh, I'm interested in going to this. That shows to like all their friends that they're interested in going.
Sure.
So that's just an, an idea of a way to market some of this stuff, because I think that it's, that it's, you know, it is exciting that we're doing this stuff and, you know, it would be nice to get our community excited about it.
Yeah.
Agreed.
I had two more, two more thoughts also about, about that, just from feedback on that same goal, is the, and I know this came up actually in CPAC meeting the other day in a different context, but maybe somewhat similar with, we talk about curriculum in, in how we get parent, you know, in the earlier goal, but I wonder, we, it was suggested that maybe we look at the vendors that are going to be doing, like for the literacy. And maybe they could, because I know there's been mixed feedback about, you know, what, what their parent, what the kids are seeing at home or how like, you know, the feedback or whether it's they're on the computer or whatnot, so amplify, maybe they do some type of parent, you know, presentation to the community on like, hey, this is the, this is what we're doing in this, you know, in this grade, and so it gives parents that insight, because they had so much from the, if it's not a book, you know, a lot of parents understand curriculum, right? And, and you want to, I think it's a lot of it's educating, like this is what, this is how it helps monitor, this is how it, you know, it achieves these goals, this is what it allows a teacher to do, this is the professional development. I don't know if that, and also if there's feedback that parents can have, they can give it directly to the vendor as well. You know, on, you know, my kid, it seems like there's a lot on the computer or whatever that might be. But I, I think that might be an opportunity for engagement with parents on, you know, on a, on a forum on like, hey, this, this might be a good place for them to, you know, come out and learn about, amplify, you know, was it CK? Yeah, anyway, just things, things like that, that, that's new, and that helps also get that feedback and, from the community as well. The other part too is survey for like a, a staff cultural survey or something to that effect. I know we talked about, I know the school committee got a lot of, at the end of the year, right, feedback about the evaluation from the staff, but it'd be really good to get like feedback earlier on, so like, maybe like right now, and then, I don't know, to do, to see how the year regarding these, this type of, the community building is working, so I don't know if there's a way to do that. At some point.
Benchmark, I would love to have a benchmark where we have the staff survey, so that that way, you know, they get their voice, I know they wanted their voices heard last year, and that would be nice to have.
Right, that's what I was thinking, how do we, how do we take that feedback that we heard at the end of the year? But really be proactive about it earlier on, that we're looking to build meaningful, positive relationships with all this different stakeholders. And that, you know, as a superintendent goal, that you're soliciting in some way, you know, the feedback as a benchmark that will be provided, you know, that to see how, whatever, whatever those, if there's a wellness or a cultural aspect that can help inform some of these communication initiatives as well, like do they feel that they're getting information as they need? I know there's a lot of efforts going on with the, the professional development, there's a, you know, team, there's just a lot of energy, and I just want to make sure that we get the sense of how their, their needs are also being met.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Good points.
Anybody else? Any last words? Okay. Guess we're moving on to the student attendance.
So can I interrupt you, ma'am?
Absolutely.
So you may want to look at your clock, you have two presentations plus policy. Just food for thought.
We, yeah, we may want to, yeah.
You may want to make a strategic decision right here.
What's on the agenda next time? Do we have anything big on the next agenda?
You?
Wait, is that, is that, can we table the, can we table the policy? The, I don't know if that's really time sensitive.
That's, that's going to take two seconds. Yeah.
Well, I had questions about it, but.
Okay, then we should table it.
I was just trying to be considerate of time, so we're not sitting here at 10 o'clock exhausted, not really paying attention to either Chuck or Wayne.
The budget we need to do today, right? The budget is important.
Yes.
Okay, well, I know that there's specific parents that are here for the student attendance, so I'd prefer not to table that. I'd be willing to table the policy. And so.
Okay, all right, let's do it.
Table the next meeting.
Okay. All right. So we're going to go ahead with the student attendance. Brian?
Yep, so I know that the school committee actually, either at the last meeting or two meetings ago, brought up the topic of student attendance and how, how is our attendance? We often in Maynard, we're sort of like, you know, as we look at state data, we're often at the state average, and I think, like, as superintendent, I'm like, that's not good enough for us. We should be well above the state average, or in terms of attendance, we should, you know, our numbers should be that we have most kids attending most days. So we, but you asked, and I don't remember which one, so I guess give the entire committee credit for asking the good question. And then Mr. Kara Janis has done a lot of homework to put together and be able to share with you what exactly is the reality of attendance, because there's a lot of anecdotal stories from every building and from different adults. So this is an opportunity to really dive in a little bit deeper and take a look at, you know, who's attending school, who's not? And then some implications moving forward about what can we do differently to, you know, if there's improvements that we want to make, what might we do to do that? So let me turn it over to Chuck at that, thank you.
Thank you, I think Colleen has the presentation. So yes, this is a, and it's look at attendance from 2018 through 22, which would be a pre-COVID year through COVID. And year-to-date attendance as of earlier this week in the current year. We don't have comparative data from the state for the current year at this point. Just broadly speaking, there are a lot of weak correlates in education. If you look at a particular activity or club, it correlates with improved performance for a relatively small number of students. You could look at a category like sports more broadly, and it might have a positive correlation for a somewhat bigger group of students. But in, in general, schools try to weave together offerings that appeal to students in different ways to, to have them be more engaged in the community and, and more engaged overall with their peers. One of the strongest correlates in education is attendance. If students come to school, they tend to do better. The state has, and there are multiple studies that students who regularly achieve 95% attendance per year on a ongoing basis. And of course, there can be an exception for a year where there's a health issue or something like that. But in general, if a student is coming to school 95% of the time throughout their career from pre-kindergarten through high school, they do really well. So that's simply been noted and documented over and over again. The data that's coming up is broken out to show rates of attendance for all students as well as high need students. The high needs category you're going to see is defined by the state to include English learners, former English learners, students of families of low economic status and students on individual education plans. The data, the way I broke. The data, the way I broke it out, uh, is done intentionally to preserve the anonymity of all students and families. If you start breaking out into categories within, say, the high-needs category of EL in high school, there are 17 kids. I mean, you're, you're, you're almost naming the kids without too much homework at that point and, a presentation like this shouldn't be doing that. So the data, as it's shown, is designed to preserve the anonymity of the students and their families. So if we go on to the next slide, we'll see the pre-COVID year. I would point out, uh, through all of these slides, until the last slide where we don't have state data for this current year-to-date. We're talking about Maine Public Schools in comparison to the state. So whatever factors, say during COVID in particular, affect Maynard, were also affecting the state. So an argument that, well, you know, maybe the attendance is a little low, but, but you know, there were factors that affected us. Factors affected everybody. So, you know, why would our numbers look different than the state broadly? Which by the way includes large urban districts, uh, so we're not even comparing to like suburban cohorts where the data tends to be even stronger. So I, I'm just, I'm gonna just put that out there. In 2019, 20, the pre-COVID year, you'll see that the Maine Public Schools were lagging the state overall by 3%, a little bit more. Our high-needs students were lagging the state by almost 7%, 6.8%. Um, students absent, you can see there, the average number of absences, students absent 10 or more times. There is one year where the state, uh, during COVID puts in a 20% category to account for additional absences due to COVID. But this was a pretty weak year. It was not a good year. You, there's just no other way to say it. When you look at data and you get a red flag for being well above or well behind something, it's worth thinking about what might be causing you to be well below or well above something. I would remind folks from a historical point of view that this was the year where there was quite a bit of controversy about the Green Meadow School and the environment in the Green Meadow School. I'm talking about the physical environment. I suspect, I have not dug into it per se, but I think the concerns about um, the Green Meadow School probably had an impact on overall attendance that year, which would tend to drive numbers down. Um, there was also a different administration at that point in time, which has since changed. Uh, there's been changes in the superintendency twice, uh, in the curriculum director and assistant superintendent's role a couple of the times. Yeah, and, uh, there have been multiple changes at building levels in the elementary school and, uh, middle school since that time. So there were different players on the field at that point in time and there was a particular event with the Green Meadow School during that year. Um, if you go on to the next year, which was 20, uh, 2020, 2021, this is a COVID year. The numbers begin to recover. I think the Green Meadow issues at that point had been, uh, dealt with and obviously we're attempting to build a new Green Meadow School and we're trying to deal with that even more. Um, it is worth noting that the high-needs category students continue to lag pretty significantly below the state. Um, we do know that high-needs students seem to have been particularly impacted during COVID. Um, the sorts of supports that they would get in person, uh, were not, uh, available. We did bring students in these categories in ahead of all other categories of students, as did other districts. But again, any, anything that you could mention that was impacting high-needs students in Maynard, those factors were impacting students across the state. Um, so to me, a big question is, you know, we're 7.1% behind the state with our high-needs students. Whereas on a whole, we're at least closing in on the state. So I think the difference on the whole is probably just about completely attributable to, uh, high-needs students attendance being off. Again, this was under a, a different superintendent initially, uh, and we've, uh, since moved on. Um, if you look at the next year's data, uh, which is last year.
Brian was, Brian was with us that year before.
Yeah, but numbers were improving overall.
Okay. Superintendent, sorry.
Uh, I'm sorry, that was probably my mistake. Um, but yeah, numbers were improving overall. Um, last year, you can see that Maine Public Schools actually pulls ahead of state average. So we went from really bad to getting better with a notable lag for special education students to actually pulling ahead of the state, both in terms of overall attendance rate and attendance rate, uh, for, uh, high-needs students. The one number that is still a little below the state is if you go to the unexcused absences nine or more, um, which is 5% um, with, uh, high-needs students, it's still slightly lagging the state. But students weren't getting into the even higher absentee rates, uh, which overall allowed us to pull slightly a, ahead of the state with the high-needs students. So if you were gonna summarize these three years, we, I think we went from pretty poor to catching up to slightly pulling ahead, I think would be the, the way to describe it. Um, and that brings us up to year-to-date this current year. You can see that for all of our students at Maynard High School, the overall attendance rate is 93.8%. It's actually slightly better than where we were last year. High-needs students at Maynard High School, attendance rate is up to 91.7%, which is also slightly better than the district as a whole last year. Um, and you can see early in the year where our numbers lie. Um, I did not get to the, I didn't think putting 5% absent rate this early in the year, if a, if a student's absent, um, twice, they're more than 5% absent. I, I just think it's too early in the year to put other data categories in, but the overarching categories here, you can see that the attendance rates across the district, if you get to the Fowler, you see 92 with high-needs students actually with a better attendance rate than the school at a whole, as a whole at the Fowler, and also high-needs students at the Green Meadow were slightly higher than the school as a whole. So there have been, um, improvements, um, with overall attendance, but there's also been improvements with our, our high-needs students as well in terms of attendance. Um, and on the, uh, final slide, uh, so we have this data, what do we do with it? Um, you know, what are our intervention strategies? And that's what we get into, um, on the, uh, next slide. So if Colleen, if you could advance that. Here we go. So we've, uh, looked at intervention strategies to a considerable degree. And in general, the literature suggests that attendance interventions occur as, as early as possible. I'm sure some parents think we're nagging them early in the year. What all the data shows is if a student starts getting behind early, uh, they can bury themselves very early in the year. Uh, at the high school level, that puts them in danger of not getting credits and not advancing in grade level. Um, at the elementary and middle levels, uh, you start seeing, uh, huge learning gaps. You know, you start having holes in students' math instruction, which is sequential. Um, you see holes in students' reading and writing emerge pretty quickly. So intervention strategies really should occur, uh, uh, early, uh, at, at, as the year unfolds. Intervention strategies currently employed by our schools, uh, I have a few here, but I actually have spoken with the, uh, assistant principals and principals, and I, I have more than what's on, on the screen, um. We, our assistant principals have attended professional development on attendance and what's actually legally required. Every time a student has an increment of five absences, uh, we're actually supposed to be sending a letter home in the language of the student. Uh, this is not optional and it is not whether the absences are excused or unexcused. Um, you may say, why is that? Well, I've been doing this for 30 years now, and although it doesn't happen often, we'll send a letter home saying your student's been absent five times and the parent says, no, they haven't. And we find that maybe some of those notes were creatively dis- designed and implemented by the student. Um, doesn't happen often, but we have had forged absence notes and parents are very surprised to find that their students have been absent five times. So, uh, whether it's excused or unexcused in, in increments of five absences, letters are supposed to go out at the fifth absence, the 10th absence, the 15th absence. This is by state regulation. So again, if parents think, why am I getting these annoying letters? I call my students in, don't you believe me? It's a state regulation. And I'm gonna quickly say in an editorial way, if you read the regulation, uh, this holds for all schools except for charter schools. Which is interesting to even think about, but I digress. Um, so we, uh, we have an automated call system when students are absent. At three absences in at least the high school and I think the other buildings, personal phone calls go home. Uh, some of our assistant principals are using LexiKey translation program so that they can communicate in the home language of the student. Letters that are sent home are translated into the home letter, uh, home language of the student. There are credit recovery meetings at the high school if a student's getting behind in credit and attendance contracts, uh, are put in place and, uh, students are put into programs to recover credits at the high school before they lose the whole year. I know those are implemented right in, even in the first quarter of the year. Daily attendance is shared with staff, so we can track students to make sure that students aren't cutting classes. I know at the high school, they're trying to create an art club, um, and tie it to come to school. If you're in school, you can go to art club because, uh, many students, um, uh, connect around the arts in a different kind of way and it's been sort of a gap in our, in our after-school offerings. If the child's, uh, or students' attendance at all three buildings, um, really is, uh, getting poor and, yeah, there's inadequate documentation. A CRA can be filed, which is a child requiring assistance request through the courts. That's usually when a child is approaching truancy. We have programs like the Oasis Program and Tiger Program now in place so that students who are having anxiety, school phobia issues, we have specialized program to try to reintegrate those students in. Um, all the buildings have a case management model now where students are being monitored very closely as individuals to see who's doing well, who might be struggling. The struggling might be for attendance, but it might be for other reasons. It might be attendance in conjunction with other reasons. Um, we have building-based support teams that meet. Um, if a student is getting behind academically to see what supports might be added, sort of tier two and tier three supports. The Maynard Police Department, in conjunction with the District Attorney's Office, actually has diversion programs. So if, uh, students are having difficulty with attendance or, or maybe, uh, need some additional social and emotional supports, diversion programs are actually designed to give students supervised healthy, uh, alternatives. It could be community service projects, uh, that are offered through the, uh, Maynard Police Diversion Program. Individual parent meetings are held all the time with students who are having attendance difficulties. The high school is, uh, trying to think up incentive programs to incentivize attendance. They're, they're working on that. And our nurses in all of our buildings, uh, are part of the case management teams and will provide for students with specific health issues. They'll provide that information in the case management teams. We might then say a 504 plan might be needed, a modified school day might be needed through something like a referral to an IEP process, uh, if it's a mental health, uh, type of issue or, or, or an emotional issue that's emerging. So as you go through the buildings, uh, we are using multiple intervention strategies, um, to try to have students come to school in an environment where they can feel comfortable, uh, taking into account mental health needs, um, with the goal of having the students be successful academically, but also socially. Um, and again, to try to get their attendance toward that almost magic golden 95% level where students in correlating very highly then, then do well. Um, the final slide is sort of the outcomes and implications. And, uh, you know, if, if we look at the attendance trends in Maynard, uh, we have been trending upward over the past three-plus years. Um, we went from being behind the state to starting to catch up to being ahead of the state over that three-year period. I, I would argue there's no doubt that these figures can be improved upon even further. Um, I think our goal should be 95% attendance district-wide. Um, and of course, there'll be individual students with individual circumstances. And that's why all of these intervention steps I just described are in place to try to personalize and individualize for students who are, who are having attendance difficulties. I, I would say that what we've done, those, the interventions, uh, that I've mentioned, many of them are, have come at little or no cost to the district. Things like the Oasis Program, the Tiger Program do have staffing needs, but those are really tier-three programs for highly specific cohorts of students. And, uh, I think being able to work with those students to try to uh, get them more comfortable in school and, and back into the population and, and passing their classes and doing their academic work, even as they get social and emotional support, I think that's money well spent. And, uh, right now, I, I'm not, uh, thinking that district-level policy changes are required, but should, should something emerge where we think a, a policy change would be required? Um, obviously, we would, we would bring that forward. So, um, that's the, uh, presentation and, uh, I know no one has any questions because it was so thorough and, uh, oh, wait, wait, there is questions. Okay, so just kidding. So questions, please.
Okay, I can't tell who on the screen. Um, thank you, thank you very much, Chuck, for, for that information. I, I know that I had asked about it too, so I really appreciate just hearing as it talk about attendance, the context of, of, of those measurements and what, what they're, um, how you're looking at that. The, um, the other subgroups, because you mostly highlighted the, uh, all students and then the high needs, but there are the other subgroups that do have those higher rates as well, um, which the students with disabilities, low income, and you talked about it, but, um, there's also the Hispanic Latino subgroup as well that I noticed looking through multiple years back. Those, all of those groups, and this is going back to 18, have, have had higher than the state average, each of those. And so I, I think that kind of predates, there's always gonna be, I think, something that triggers, like there's, you know, a Green Meadow episode or whatever. But it seems to be those same groups that are, um, not just high-needs, but also thinking for, um, how do we, and I don't know if there's any correlation, I, you know, looking at, um, the discipline, out-of-school discipline, those same groups. And I don't know if there's any correlation, I, you know, looking at the discipline, out of school discipline, those same groups also have larger or more days out of school for disciplinary reasons. So I I wonder if there's an opportunity or I I don't know, just to look into to that, like to understand the function a little bit more of those subgroups, a little bit more to to understand, because I know that from, you know, being Latino, I know that that there are some of my family who live in Florida who younger, they, you know, they had to work earlier, they had to support, you know, they had to care for their younger siblings at home where their parents, both of their parents weren't even at home for many hours. So I just want to understand like the function of those things, because we talk about the punitive part, but I don't know if a student or a parent is gonna reach out and say, this is the issue I'm struggling with, right? Because we don't have a social worker in town that can kind of feel those, you know, those family environments more. So that's what my question would be. Is this, is there a, you know, an opportunity from a DEI perspective to look at, you know, how we're supporting those other groups that do have higher, higher absentee rates historically beyond COVID, beyond Green Meadow, multiple superintendents in the past. That that was my, that's my worry is, and then hearing the the feedback earlier from Liam was just really great to understand that there's that, just as a reminder, we talk about, you know, how they could, you know, diversion programs, but those are kind of punitive. They're, you're right, they're not necessarily, I I know they're intended to help them to kind of rent, to go on a positive path. But if the child's at home struggling, you know, with mental needs or parents may or may not be, you know, in a great place themselves possibly to support them, I just don't know if that's for that, that we talk about a social worker in a town that we don't have. I don't know if those are all things to consider that we might need to advocate for a little bit more, that just the the resources that we have are just not effective as we want.
I I'd just say a couple of things. I I did discuss about fifteen or twenty things that we do. We try to tailor to, like, we don't refer every kid with a attendance issue to a diversion program. There are kids who are referred to the diversion program frankly have crossed the Maynard Police's radar as well. So we're trying to have them see the frankly, the police as a resource rather than just a punitive arm. We would not take a student who had not come into contact with the Maynard Police in a meaningful way and refer them to the police diversion program. So these things are tailored to this situation. I I just point that out. And also for some of the subgroups, numbers are so small in some of the buildings, I was a little reluctant.
And I hear you. I just, I just happened to look over the the state website.
I will say something broadly that doesn't necessarily emerge from this data. We do notice with our EL students that attendance is quite significant issue. And we're really trying to hone in now on working. And so I'm talking broadly K to twelve. So that I'm not trying to identify any individual students again, but we we did notice that cohort as a significant divergence from our attendance numbers in general.
And I and I appreciate that because I look, I've looked at this through the years and I even look at the dropout, like the the student groups that, you know, and some of them are the same, right? So they're, you know, they start earlier on, you know, having attendance and then somehow along the way, we're just not able to, you know, to capture them and then at some point they just give up or, you know, it it doesn't end. So that's, that's the cycle that I appreciate you're looking at it more holistically, K to twelve. And if there's a way, we can better get to the function of why those particular subgroups, what kind of specific supports they're looking at. I don't know if, I know Charles is those groups that you're looking to do outreach for, can, you know, can can I help lend and inform those discussions, but I think that's just so critical. We're missing a piece there. And and I hope we can figure it out.
Yeah, I I just, I just want to give a tip of the hat to Charles because he's been working to form a parent EL group and doing things like going into the community to try to meet students and families where they are. These are early steps, but again, as we look at the data, it we realize that we need to do more to support certain cohorts of our students.
Thank you.
Kathy, I'm, I just wanted to let you know that we, this timeframe is for school committee to ask questions. If you have specific questions that you'd like to ask, you can email Mr. Karagina directly and I'm sure that he'll be happy to help you. Sorry that you are not able to ask your questions during this time. Mary?
Yeah, I just, I more wanted to give kudos to Charles because he's been saying for years that if we had, you know, if each maybe staff member, and we were talking about the high school, but even maybe down at least to the middle school, if each of those students specifically, all students would be ideal, but those students had a mentor, had one teacher, and that's where like the advocacy group and that that, you know, it keeps talking about bringing that down to the middle school too, just it might help a little bit to have a person at the school that could really notice that they're missing or, you know, just reach out for them to feel comfortable with it. Won't help everybody, but it might just be an anchor to to help some of these, some of these students. And and also Charles's outreach to the, to, you know, to the EL community and that too. That's obviously a a piece that is huge. So that was it. Those are my comments.
Um, yeah, I'll just add, I don't know if it helps, but there are programs like the one I have at my school called the Guiding Hawk, where not only do they have, it's not only adult mentors, but it's ha- having kids who are already in the district, take kids who are just coming in under their wing, especially in the beginning and show them around when they first come and be a point person for them at first, and then they meet as a group regularly. So there's, um, there are opportunities within the student body that we could potentially explore to to kind of help kids feel more like they belong, going back to that from before. But also thank you. All of that was very thorough and wonderful, and thank you for all that information.
Uh, Chuck, um, I think it was great, the all the information that you gave us. And, you know, I think it's wonderful that you, that you're thinking about all the the, you know, higher needs children or students that need those, those extra incentives or all the things that you're putting in place. But one of the things that I think that maybe needs to be also talked about are students that like, like the one that Liam had mentioned, doing really well. Maybe getting all As or high Bs that were sick for, say, home three days and then maybe gets sick again in the, in the further along in the semester, maybe is home for, you know, another three days. And but they're still doing really well. It seems really punitive from my point of view to then say, while you were absent seven days. So you get, but you're getting an A and now you're not getting an A. So I'm just wondering how you deal with those types of situations where, you know, if they have a cold, they're not gonna go to the doctors. So how does that work?
We work very individually in the Maynard Public Schools. It is extraordinarily rare for a student who's doing well academically. I can't think of any cases in several years doing very well academically at the high school, lost credit for a course. We might have, we might come to an arrangement to a student to come to a homework club for four days and we will erase four absences or 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 something to, you know, try to get the student back on track. You know, it, families are involved, phone calls are made. We try to reach reasonable accommodations with the students. There was a handbook policy. It really is related to student truancy. For students who are struggling with things like anxiety and have five oh fours, you know, we have documented information. Our handbook policy does not trump a five oh four and IEP plan, for example, by law. So we're, we're quite cognizant of those students and I understand that some students have anxiety issues. And we through, usually through their school counselor or through the nurse, become aware of that and and we work with those students. So I, and to the people who are listening, listening in, if you've, if you have an issue related to an attendance policy or what's going on, you probably want to start with the building administrators and 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 be frank with them about what's going on. The attendance policy really impacts high school students the most potentially because they can lose credits, which can slow down their their graduation rate. But I'd still point out to folks that five percent of a semester, I'm sorry, ten percent of a semester is what the standard is, ninety school days is, it's really on the the eighth or ninth absence that this comes into play. Those are unexcused absences. So if you have doctor's notes and you, for six absences and you have eight more unexcused absences, that's fourteen absences and you're still within the attendance policy. So, you know, we're, we're talking about big absence numbers here. And in those isolated cases, those relatively few cases that you're describing, Mara, we work with those kids individually.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Financial report.
Wayne's turning into a pumpkin.
I know.
Now, I'm going to hopefully share my screen.
And real quick, is this posted yet, Colleen or?
Yes.
It is, okay.
But
Not on the website?
No, it's not on the final, financial page yet.
Okay, all right, but soon to be, because I want to circulate it to the the finance committee and I just want to.
Well, I have an updated version that I will send out. That's why I'm sharing my screen. I want to thank Marl and Mary for their catching, their edits and this report is inclusive of those edits. So thank you, you too. So so I want to thank you, the school committee, for allowing a little more time for the fourth quarter report this year. It is a little later than it was last year. It was presented in September of last year. There was a lot of activity this year and closing out the year and coordinating with the town. Really didn't finish until everything until probably near the end of August. And then that took me into September, which is when I usually began my preparation of the end of year report, that as you know, is the state report that goes to the Department of Secondary, Elementary, Secondary Education. So I appreciate your your patience and allowing me that extra time. Overall, the district finished a little over budget to the tune of a little over seventy-four thousand dollars before adjustments. Which isn't too bad when you're dealing with almost twenty-two million dollars over a a twelve month period. Trying to land the airplane just perfect. Sometimes it's not an exact science. Our original budget, as you remember, was twenty-one million, one thirty-six, two six one. With the help and the guidance from you on the school committee, in particular Natasha, we were able to get a reimbursement from the town, as you remember, twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which the way the town did it, they added that in, then that brought that number up to twenty-one million, one six four. Our school expenditures were twenty-one million, two, three, eight, which put the budget in an initial deficit. This and other expenses, you know, I'll show later, were offset by by circuit breaker, which is what we do every year. One of the things I talk about is, and I'll go into more detail later, is the use of circuit breaker money. I was required to use circuit breaker money because there is a limit on the amount of circuit breaker money that can be carried over from year to year. It is roughly, and this is not exact down to the dollar, but roughly approximately what you get in one year's worth of reimbursements. So as you know, we don't have enough funding to fully fund our special education costs. Unfortunately, we know that, that's what we use circuit breaker for. So historically, the special education minds will go into the red. That is not due to poor management or poor budgeting on anyone. That's just, as you know, the fact of life. And as a school committee, you know that as well as anybody. That's your one and two grants are either fully spent or no longer accepting expenses. And by that, I mean, it may have an encumbrance on it, say that we're paying somebody out of it and that even though it may literally not be spent, it it's spoken for and that there are no other expenses going into there. So the operating budget in general, as I said, is you know, we spent over what our our original budget was that left the seventy-four thousand dollar deficit. And if you saw the report or later on, I'll show you a table that kind of put all of that together. And but I just want you to remember that that's roughly seventy-four thousand dollar amount. Moving on to revolving accounts, circuit breaker is continued to be in good shape, has a balance of about one point three million, and this is after I spent money out of there to bring that balance down to get it in line with the guidelines of managing circuit breaker. But I did that by transferring almost four hundred and thirty thousand dollars of special education expenses from the operating budget into circuit breaker. As you know, that's, that's what we use as the primary funding source for our special education expenses that we don't have enough operating budget to fund. Facility rental, some good news there. It has a balance well over ninety-eight thousand dollars. That's significantly more than what we had this time last year. You know, we are beginning to You know, we are beginning to, um. Make a comeback. We're not at pre pandemic levels, but it's trending, uh, in the right direction. Um, with the easing of COVID restrictions begin to allow, um, people into the buildings, um. And so that's a good thing. Um, but again, um. As I've stated before, that this, this account is, um, historically what we use to fund. Um. Any building maintenance that, again, we don't have budget for operating money for. Um, we use this account to help fill, fill that gap and to, um, we try to keep our building safe and operational during school year. Um. Moving on to, um, the preschool account. It too has a, um, a relatively healthy balance. Um, I'm happy to report that Principal Rulo and I, um. At the beginning of last year and budgeting, um, for the preschool, um. We, Principal Rulo, in, in looking at his figures and what he projected for enrollment, uh, felt confident that, um. They could generate enough revenue to pay a good bit of the salaries, uh, from the preschool program. Uh, not all, but a, a good share. And, um, he was right. The program did generate enough where, um. It was able to pay for two hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, in salaries. So I was able to reclass those from the operating budget into the preschool, um, revolving account. Um, I think if, uh, if I, my memory serves correctly, last year was the first year that we opened it up and went to a five day program. Um, and, um, that seemed to be very popular. And Principal Rulo would, would, you know, obviously know more of the details about that than I would. But based on what I'm seeing, it seemed to have been, um, popular. And, uh, our initial conversations around it were this year, he expects those numbers to continue to, to look positive. Um. So those funds will stay there so that, um, if there are, um, expenses that. That program, uh, encouraged in order to operate early on before the revenue really start to come in. Uh, that money is there for, uh, Principal Rulo to use for that program. School choice revolving, um, has a balance of, um, a little over six hundred and eighty three thousand dollars. Um. It benefits from the fact when I reclass expenses, um, into circuit breaker. Um, you'll see, um, when I show you the table is what I do is I move more expenses into the operating budget. Um, and when I do that, that is the equivalent of. If I move expenses out of school choice into the operating budget, that's the same thing as putting money into school choice. What that allows me to do then is to use circuit breaker money to offset the special education. Um, unfunded expenses. And that, that later in, um, the report, um. I have a, a listing of some of Brian's priorities of what. This, that, that school choice money is going to be used for. That was the balance at the close of, uh, the, the year, June thirty. Um, but. Half of that money is already committed to things and I will show you what those things are. Um, and this was, uh. Um, well, you'll see, but many of them are things that the superintendent has had kind of on his wish list that, um. He's been able to, um, to address. The grants, um, as I stated earlier, Esther one and two, for the most part, are, are spent. Um, I also want to say, I forgot to mention that, um. Uh, I think, um, Brian has mentioned previously in some of his reports that, um, there is a, um, grant meeting. Um. I think it's, we meet weekly or every couple of weeks. Uh, but anyway, we, we, I think, I don't know if it was Brian's idea or your suggestion, so we, we meet fairly frequently. Um, and, you know, it's Charles, Chuck, uh, Brian, myself, Colleen, um, and Jeff. And so all the stakeholders are in the room and, um, I give them, um. A printout of, uh, the Excel report that I put out. Of, uh, an update of all the grants balances, the end dates. Um, so everyone can know, uh, where we are in terms of grant spending. Um, remind everyone of the budgets of said grants. And so there's an ability for kind of this cross leveling of information and we can discuss that. Uh, you know, these are the purposes of these grants and like, for example, Esther three, as you know. Uh, big chunk of money over a million dollars. But based on the budget we have, every dime of that, um, is spoken for in, in, in the budget. So we do have those, uh, those ongoing grant meetings. Um. I, I mentioned that the, the, the capital wifi and infrastructure accounts still have, um, money in them. Um, but unfortunately, um. A good bit of Adam using, and that, that, th- these are, um, Adam's grants. Um, he has run into a transportation and kind of supply issue. Um. And, and as, as you've heard, you know, in the news, you know, chips, um, high tech things. And even some things that aren't high tech, uh, they exist. But you can't get it from point A to point B because there is, uh, a lack of adequate, uh. Truck drivers to move the commodities from party to part B. So, uh, I just say that, you know, he's aware of, uh, the money, the balances that he has. And, um, he assures me that, um, you know, those, he has plans for that money and he's aware of them. So before I get into specifics, but in terms of kind of concluding the narrative, you know, um. I, like you, was glad to see FY twenty two and that we were able to kind of resort or go back to some type of normalcy. Um, the students are back, protocols are relaxed. Um, you know, um, the students are able to play sports, which is a. A good rallying point for families and fans alike, that people can try to get back to the things that they love. And get their minds off of, uh, off of the pandemic. We're able to fund all of our instructional activities, uh, within the operating budget. Or grant funding or circuit breaker, all the revolving accounts. Um, that sounds like, well, yeah, of course you should, but again, as I talk to colleagues, that's not always the case. Um, I was talking to a colleague today. I was at, um, professional development down in Milford on special education. And, um, he was talking about that. Um, they needed to go to the town for a million dollar override because of a shortfall. Um, because they had, um, some unexpected special needs, uh, people move into the district. Um, so the fact that we're able to, um, meet the district needs financially within all of our funding sources, I don't take for granted. Um, so I do look forward to another successful year and be able to manage the budget to support. Uh, the school committee and superintendent's initiatives, um, financially. Um. So with that, there are a couple, uh, tables here that I just wanted to go over. Um, again, as I said, the initial deficit we had, uh, we overspent by a little over seventy four thousand dollars. So our original budget was twenty one, one through six. We had an additional twenty seven thousand, eight, seven, seven, um, as a result of. The extraordinary, uh, reimbursement that, that we got back from the town. So that brought our adjusted budget to twenty one, one, six, four, one, three, eight. And our expenditures were twenty one, two, three, eight, five, four, one. And so that's how we ended up, um, with the deficit. And again, this is before any reclassification or anything involving circuit breaker. Um. The other thing I want to mention is, in a perfect world, uh, when we get ready to close the year and roll from one year into the other. All of the things that you have, uh, ordered. Um, you would have received and you get to close out all the purchase orders and everything like that. Unfortunately, life is not like that necessarily. That's not always the case. So you, we, and we did, we had where there was an open purchase order, you ordered something. And, um, you know, I started to say serious road book, but I guess I'm showing my age here, um.
I remember.
You didn't say Woolworth, so I think you're okay.
You, you know, they hadn't shipped it yet, so we didn't have it. So, um, so that presents a minor dilemma. And as some of you may already know, then what I do is I coordinate with the town. Those are called encumbrances. I let them know, um, you know, what those items are and what the dollar amount is. And that gets, um, added in as if we actually spent the money, uh, because accounting wise, we have. Um, and then when they come in, you know, we get to pay those, uh, invoices with FY twenty two money. Even though we're in, in, um, FY twenty three. So there were, uh, total encumbrances of, uh, a little over a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. A hundred and thirteen, seven, five, nine, point, six, four. Um. And then there was, uh, two hundred and forty one thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars of expenses that were reclassed from school choice into the operating budget. So with the operating budget at, um. A deficit of seventy four thousand dollars plus the hundred and thirteen thousand that were the encumbered POs. Plus the reclass expenses from school choice of two hundred and forty one. Uh, this put the operating budget at a deficit of almost four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So then what I do is I reclass that same amount in special education expenses, um. From the operating budget to circuit breaker and this leaves, um, uh, operational spend at twenty one million. Fifty thousand, three hundred and seventy nine with the additional encumbered funds that I talked about to equal the original budget. And that's what I have on the next table that I have labeled the close out overview. Again, it shows the deficit of seventy four thousand. You add in, um, the invoices that we were, that were encumbered. And the. Expenses that I reclassed from school choice that brought the deficit there. And then that allowed me then to do a transfer from circuit breaker, um, into the operating budget to bring that down to zero. Um, and, and, and close out the year. Um. I just mentioned, put a, a sentence in there that, um, you know, in order to do this at this time, I'm in constant communication with the town accountant. To, you know, I start out by saying, well, first we start out, but as we start to get close to the end. Uh, you know, I'm getting reports from the town accountant's office, probably on a weekly, sometimes. More frequent basis because we're trying to track and make sure that our numbers match their numbers. As you know, we have two different systems, so we, I constantly have to reconcile. And I think that, um, you know, the fact that we have a good relationship with the town. Uh, Lori and I were, and Kevin, um, worked, worked well and, you know. Uh, I called her up and I said, this is where I look, excuse me, where I look, I think where I'm going to finish the year. Um, I've got some POs that, you know, we haven't gotten either the goods or the service. And I, um, need to reclass some expenses to use circuit breaker money. So I, I just kind of ran my strategy by her and said, this is what I'm planning on doing. And, um, you know, she said, yeah, that, that, that sounds good. So, um, as I usually do, I presented to you the, both the detailed and condensed operating budget. And Mary, uh, these numbers are all have been, um. Uh. Updated and edited. That's why I'm using my, um, from my screen. And I will get you these, um, the school committee, you know, will repost these so that you have the updated. Um, but if you, uh, remember, this is, um, according to the, um. The, uh, the cost centers, you know, administration is one thousand, instructional leadership is two thousand. Um, the three thousand serious pupil services, operation and maintenance. Benefits, fixed charges and programs with other districts. And to remind you, these are all the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education designations. Um, it's called the, um, the DOE code. Um, and so these are set at any comm, any district in the, in the Commonwealth. Um, will have the same breakdown. So these, these are all, um, uniformly done. And here at the bottom, you see what we talked about or what our, our budget was, uh, what we spent. And that one thirteen was, uh, earmarked for our encumbrances. Um, so here is what I call the condensed operating budget. It's the same data from the previous chart. Just, just where it says, kind of flattened down so that you can better see the cost centers that, um. Um, that you guys approved. Um, so the one thousand administrative people, but, uh, what we spent and what our budget was in each of these areas. And as I usually do, I give you, um, a little cheat sheet down there at the bottom to tell you the types of expenses. Um, that are included. And again, you have the same numbers, our original budget, what we spent. And what the remainder is, but that was encumbered and accounted for in terms of outstanding expenses. Um. These are grants, um, we have, um, at your direction. You have, uh, approved all of these, the latest of which were, uh, tonight. Um, and, um, I list the, the grants out by their name. But primarily I use or identify grants the way, uh, the Department of Elementary Secondary Education. And that is with the grant number. For example, this first one, uh, the fund number is one, four, seven. And, um, that makes it very easy because each one has a unique number. But. If you look at the name, sometimes grants can have very similar sounding names. Um, I've even, they had, there was one digital literacy grant that was, there's one that's digital literacy. Then there's digital, digital literacy now, and then there's a digital literacy number two. You know, we don't have all of those, but that's why I, even though I have the name, I go by the number, like the one forty seven grant or the two forty grant. Or the three oh two or three oh five, because those are unique and it, it reduces the, um, the confusion factor. Um, before I leave this page, I just want to bring your attention to, like I said, Esther one is, is, uh, closed. Um, Esther two is two. Um, I have, it's, you see that it has a negative balance there. I have to go back in, um, and this was at the end of June. I have to go back in, um, and this was at the end of June. What I do is I go back in, within each grant. In addition to adhering to the bottom line number. There are categories, or I like to use the common term buckets, whether it's salaries, contracted services. And that is laid out when you, when the grant is written. The person that writes the grant. Tells the the DESI. How much they wanna spend in each of these categories, and the categories again are set up by DESI. Whether professional salaries, support salaries, contract services. I'm telling you that because. And it, so in each of these areas, so let's say you in. Contract services and the original budget, it says that there's five thousand dollars allocated. Well, when the grant is closed, I go in, I may see for whatever reason. That there were seven thousand dollars in contract services. I now have to reconcile that. And either find another place to put that. And and so that's what I have to do to S R two and I will probably there is uh. There is bandwidth in S R three that I can move those expenses uh into S R three, so that's that's just what that says. And that will happen um here shortly, but as of June, that's the, that's the way that looks. And then the next thing are the revolving accounts. As I said, circuit breaker um has one point three uh million in it. The school lunch revolving account. To remind you, that's what we use to pay the invoices from the food service company, which as you know now is uh Whitsons. Again, a reminder, I know you know. You know, there's no operating budget money that supports the uh school lunch program. It is operated uh one hundred percent off of the um both state and federal reimbursements. That we get as a result of serving a reimbursable meal. And I just wanna take this opportunity to talk about. Reimbursable because Johnny doesn't like apples, Johnny doesn't wanna take an apple. But we make Johnny take the apple. Because if we don't. That is not a reimbursable meal. We can't get reimbursed, we don't get paid. And so we have spent that money to make the meal and then we don't get reimbursed. Now, what Johnny does with uh that apple after the fact. Is a different story and we're working on, I've shared with Brian that um. You know, we have a potential solution to address that. If Johnny doesn't want the apple or the milk or whatever, even though we have to give it to them and 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 we can talk about that. At some other time. Again, I talked about the school uh facility rental revolving, um, and again. You know, that will be utilized to uh help supplement the um, the maintenance of the 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 building. It's kind of the same way as um. Special education, we don't unfortunately have enough funding to. Hundred percent fund all the maintenance uh requirements that we have out of the operating budget and so. We're lucky to have a revolving account that we can use to help supplement. Our maintenance efforts. And then the last thing is, uh, if you remember, I I said, you know, that uh while school choice had a big. Balance, at least at the time, at the end of the year. That there was a significant portion of about half of that money is already spoken for. And so um, I was happy to go to the superintendent and say. Boss, um, you know, that wish list that you've had there that um. You know, there's an opportunity here for you to address some of that. And that's what this list. Represents is the superintendent. Then prioritize what he wanted to uh, what he wanted to spend things on. You know. I don't know, you want me to continue, Brian? I don't wanna steal your thunder. Should I continue?
I mean, I, it doesn't matter, you're doing a fine job, I mean. You keep going, if you have questions, you can ask.
Yeah, okay.
Wayne, um, is it, is it, is this real quick, while we're on this, like, cause I did have a question, so would this be um? More to say that these are encumbered. Expenses, right? I just wanna make sure we're posting this, that we're sharing that, cause it talks about commitments, but we've already, to your point, if they look at the balance now. The monies haven't all been expensed yet to this, but they are encumbered for. William en- envisioned for for FY twenty three, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wonder if that'd be a good way to frame, uh, maybe in the beginning, so FY twenty three encumbered. Just to connect that, the balance is not, um, these are gonna come, these are commitments after. After the closing that are in FY twenty three.
Well. Yes, you have the right thought, but you it technically, you can't use the word encumbered. But that's, it's the same thought that.
Or FY twenty three, you know, committed funds.
Yeah, that's why I have, you know, financial commitments because. I wanted a way that as. You know, Brian says, you know, I want to give the libraries X amount of dollars for each building. You know, I wanted to be able to track that because I didn't wanna constantly have that big number in my head and you lose track of. Who you gave what to, and so this way, as we did that. So let's just say if I use six hundred dollars, make it math easy, and we've allocated three hundred. In my mind now, I've only got three hundred left because I have these commitments now. Whether that librarian has actually spent her ten thousand dollars yet or not. I li- I have to hold it. Because she's been given authority to do so, so sometime this year. She will spend that, even though she may not have spent it right, right this minute.
And can I ask one more question about the grants? Um, and that's the only other question I have, cause everything else, I think, is you've explained. The the. The ones that you, the capital ones that I know, like the IT, the infrastructure pieces there. I know those were approved very specific from um free cash. And so they're, you know, they're gonna remain in those accounts. Right until they're expensed according to what that line was created for, right? So the. I guess what I would wanna say is there's an op- if there's an opportunity. That they're feeling like maybe we don't, we didn't need all of these for infrastructure or whatever, that we got funding. Would repurposing them at a future town meeting for some other school need be a thought? Anyway, I just wanted to put out there, I don't know how much if we, if they're committed for for things that just, you know, shipping wise, but that'll be the only. Consideration that there, if if we, instead of them sitting somewhere, just just in case, you know, if there's a need. That we've more immediate, that we foresee a better use that if there's a conversation with the town to. You know, I don't know, that's it, thank you. Thank you, and this is a great, 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 great. Infinity report.
So, yes, Mary.
Oh, I just, I'm just a clarifying question, actually two of them, um, if I could, wait, again, the work that goes into this is amazing and it is incredibly appreciated. So the S R two, even though it said the end date was September thirtieth of twenty twenty three. We had to make all of our decisions by June thirtieth of this year? I guess I didn't remember that, and so what we're saying is the S R three. If we follow the same logic, even though the end date for use is September thirtieth of twenty twenty four, we have to have all of our decisions made for. June thirtieth of twenty twenty three? Am I following it right? It's like a year ahead of time.
No.
Okay, cause I thought you said that with the S R two, we had to have all of our, you know, we already had to have all of our decisions. Made.
Or maybe it's cause we spent it already, like we spent it before it was.
Okay, so we chose to spend it ahead.
Right, right, I think that's where that, yeah, the benefits and all those things that we had to end up using it, I think that's what it was, but I don't know, is that right?
I'm sorry, I. Clear.
No, that's okay, cause that's what I I thought we had until that end date, but you're right, so we chose to to spend it ahead of time. But we do still have that time, and we we, I'm thinking that we will have made our decisions, cause it's the budget for next year, but. Just wanted to clarify that, and the other one is the um foreign exchange that we've got two hundred and twenty eight thousand. Is that all from this year? Do we have that many exchange?
That's, it, that carries over.
Right, okay, so some of it is from this year, I know we've got exchange students and some of it is carried over. Had like about a hundred thousand or something.
Yeah, so if it, because it's a revolver, that's one of the good things about a revolving account is it's not. Limited by the fiscal year like the operating budget. But the downside is, that's the only thing you can spend it on, but. Since the the uh exchange students uh pay us. The equivalent of um uh the average. The average uh spend for our general ed- education student, when they come, if they. You know, they're going to Six Flags or whatever, you know, we pull from that so that they don't have any out of pocket. And so uh I think what happened is probably during the pandemic, you know, we weren't going anywhere and you weren't spending, and so. The money has to sit there because we can't use it for anything else.
All right, thank you.
I don't have any questions, this is very thorough and really, really helpful, thank you, Wayne, all the work that you put into it.
And I will, I will um. Get out the the updated uh one. There are just some some numbers on my table that. That got updated and I'll get.
Oh, yeah, I saw that the the black and the red at Mary's, yeah, I saw that, Mary's, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions?
No, that'll be, as soon as you're able to let us, yeah, let us know, cause then I wanna circulate it to um. Then come and uh our town budget. And I do appreciate. Considering last year's, the language you put at the end, that you, those type of. Movement decisions are made in conjunction with the town because there was a. A belief that there were, someone was going rogue. So I I understand why you clarified that and um, but. That's really good to to kind of. Memorialize that those those type of decisions. For encumbering, you know, one year into the other, whatever, are 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 made in inconsistent in alignment with the town along the way.
Yes, and I try to continually foster a good relationship between the town accountant. And my office, um, I think we work well together and um. You know, that's important.
It's um appreciated from the other side, we heard that from our budget subcommittee meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, so we've tabled the policy. I have nothing as a chair.
Can we just table everything else?
I think that we can.
Oh, except for the warrants, right? Don't we have to?
No, it's just table everything else, just table it all.
We don't need to do those, Colleen.
Okay, they've already been approved, I think it's just.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I would, I would like to note that there was a a warrant that went out today for signatures.
Thank you, Colleen, thank you.
Responded.
Thank you. All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, great, uh Natasha.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
And I'm yes.
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for.
Thank you. Next time, we're in a jamming.
Appreciate it.